Welcome, everyone.
Recording in progress.
I now call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the City Council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Pineda Neufeld.
Here.
With all counselors present, we have a call.
Wonderful. Thank you, Clerk. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that the City Council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silence. I'll ask if any counselors wish to say a few words about members of our community that we have lost. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. So this weekend is Memorial Day, and I always try to recognize all people who died in service to their country in this year. This year in particular, I want to recognize a humble hero that I had the honor to know in my life, a man by the name of Dan Ho Venetian of Eight Hawthorne Street. I went to grade school and high school with his son and knew his daughter as well and knew him. Mostly through the seventh, eighth grade, we did a thing called History Day, and we did projects on United States or world history. I did a project on the Vietnam War, and he was a Vietnam veteran, and I got to interview him and ask him about the war, which I found out at his wake, actually was one of the first times he opened up about the war, talking to other students about that. So I was very honored to be a part of that. But at the time, the things he told me, I didn't comprehend. I was a young kid, didn't understand what he had gone through, and only after having served in the military myself can I remotely grasp what he went through in his life. He served in the Vietnam War from 1970 to 1971. He was awarded the Silver Star, two Purple Hearts, which means he was wounded in combat twice, and the Bronze Star with V-Device for valor, which means he did something particularly heroic in order to get this medal. So he served his country proudly, and that would be enough for us to honor him, to remember him. But he lived a very long and fruitful life after that. He got a law degree from Suffolk University, where he continued to serve people in the community. In 1998, he was admitted and qualified as attorney and counselor for the Supreme Court of the United States. He was also particularly proud of his role in the creation of the New England Center for Homeless Veterans, where he organized a big stage performance, with Counselor Davis and I attended the service and saw a list of very famous and notable authors and actors that he convinced to come to Boston in order to create this institution that still exists to this day and still serves homeless veterans. Outside of that as well, he was an avid skier, fisher, outdoorsman, went canoeing in Labrador, went to very remote locations, he was a photographer, and he was an actor who was featured in movies such as The Spanish Prisoner, State of Maine, and Spartan. It's very sad that he's passed, and I'm thinking of his family right now, but I also have to say that if we all were able to live such a fruitful life, that would be a life worth living, and I don't think he left anything. He did everything he could on this planet while he can, so I'd like to think about him and his family and all those who served our country today.
Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. So thank you, Counselor McLaughlin, for sharing that remembrance. Dan was my neighbor, and I knew him primarily in that role, although I did always see the Marine Corps. From my kitchen sink, I could see his front porch across the block and always saw that Marine Corps flag flying above the beautiful rhododendron that he tended, which is just about to bloom. So I know that'll be a real, if it makes it through the storm, it's going to look really beautiful. But the one thing I just wanted to add was, in addition to just a few conversations that I had over the years with Dan, I heard about him probably as much as I had a chance to really interact with him, because many neighbors, in asking me in my day job as a lawyer about questions, and I often, it was not my area of expertise, they said, "Well, Dan suggested this," or "Dan helped me out with this." And it just, it was, and now learning more about his younger life and his true dedication to service and just what an amazing life he lived, it makes sense. He was clearly someone who was always willing to help out and lend a hand, and I know that meant a lot to his neighbors, and so I want to share in that condolence to his family in that remembrance. And I have an additional one as well, but I'm happy to yield for my colleagues.
Not seeing any. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I have a moment of silence as well.
Oh, Counselor Davis has a moment of silence, and then we'll move on. Counselor Klingon, and then Counselor Strezzo.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Counselor Strezzo, thank you for your presence. No worries. I also wanted to remember this evening, Marie Gillis. Marie passed away at the age of 95, not too long ago. She was a longtime Somerville resident and Ward Six resident, and I thought it was, there's a lot you could say about Marie, just a wonderful servant to the community, loved by her family and neighbors. She had seven children and many, many grandchildren and great-grandchildren, but I want to read the list of things that Marie was involved in in Somerville, and this was primarily after her husband passed, so she really dedicated herself to the community for many years later in her life. She was a member of the Somerville Planning Board, a member of the Somerville Board of Health, treasurer of Ward and City Democratic Committees, president of the Somerville Ward Six Civic Association, delegate to the Democratic State Convention, a member of the Board of Directors of the Somerville Homeless Coalition, a knitting instructor for Mothers of the Somerville PTA, member of the Davis Square Task Force, treasurer of the West Somerville Pediatrics Clinic Board of Directors, member of the Buena Vista Site Planning Committee, helped with the Fair Share Amendment, and was also involved in Somerville United Neighbors. A truly impressive list, and someone who truly was willing to donate her time and energy to the community. As we all know how important that is and how hard that can be, I think it's worth noting, so I'd like us to, my condolences to her family and like her to remember us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. This evening, I'd like us all to remember Christine Lyons, age 51, beloved mother of Taylor and Haley Perfini, passed away peacefully at her home surrounded by family on Sunday, May 11. Christine was born July 24th. She was the beloved daughter of Valerie, also known as Joanne, and Robert Lyons of Somerville. She was the cherished sister of Jill Lyons, Kathleen Lyons, Sean Lyons, and his better half, Christine Cassetta, and the late Robert P. Lyons. Christine was a loving art to Chloe, Cameron Hayden, Robert, Nicholas, Jackson, and Preston. She also leaves behind many aunts and uncles and cousins. Christine was a lifelong resident and proud graduate of Somerville High, class of 1991. She spent several years as a medical assistant where she thrived, caring for others before deciding to become a stay-at-home mom. Christine had true love for family. Her daughters were her world, and she did not miss an opportunity to share that. Christine always talked about how grateful she was to be raised with such a close-knit family. Her cousins were more like siblings. She credited that to the matriarch, her nana, whom she missed terribly. Christine's happy place was with family, at the family home in York Beach, Maine, where she spent countless summers and celebrations alongside many families and friends. I knew Christine. I considered her a friend. She did a lot of work with the Harrington Foundation. She is the niece of Kathy and Dave Harrington, and she is the daughter of many public servants that we know throughout the community, fire, from the fire department. Her dad was a firefighter, as well as her brother. And the Lyons and Harrington family will ask that they be in your prayers, and especially Christine's daughters, this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Strezzo.
On Christine's passing, yes. She was a neighbor. She was, I loved talking with her. It was clear to me that Christine had a lot of support and love around her. She was very much loved. That was always abundantly clear. And she loved her family, and she loved her daughters, and I want to say that my condolences to her family and all who loved her, and she will be missed. Thank you.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to take a moment to remember Liza Kitchell, who died last September after a three-year battle with cancer. There was a community memorial for Liza over this past weekend, so I wanted to say a few words tonight. So many, many people in our community knew Liza and her husband, Ram, through the Somerville Community Growing Center, which they both poured their hearts into. And in a family remembrance that was posted, I just wanted to share this very beautiful passage about their love of the growing center. "When her daughter Marissa was young, it was a secret garden where mother and child could enjoy nature in the heart of the city. Liza later developed a nature-themed summer theater and music program for kids called Wild Tales, and eventually Liza joined the Growing Center board, serving as president during a crucial period of transition to a new generation of leadership." And I know that Liza remained so committed to the Growing Center, I still see Ram there all the time, and I know that everyone who knew Liza will think of her every time that we go to the Growing Center. And throughout her life, Liza worked in music and in the arts. She was a classically trained pianist and worked for many years teaching in Boston Public Schools across the city, and she was also a composer, had a degree in ethnomusicology. And I just wanted to share another passage from this beautiful memorial. "She was disciplined in her dedication to regular practice," this is about her music. "While rigorous in her approach to music, she was at the same time inclusive and welcoming in her belief that music-making was an activity that all people everywhere could participate And in keeping with that, Liza taught piano lessons out of their home in the studio that she built. I know for myself and for anyone who took music lessons as a kid, that can be an extremely special relationship between students and their music teacher. She was also the driving force behind heroes of the Somerville Porch Fest called Chicken Scratch, which many people may know. And I just wanted, before wrapping up, to share a tribute from Denise Provo, our former state rep, former alderman, what she wrote about Liza. "There's nothing I can tell you about the magnificent of Liza that you don't already know. Her kindness and generosity are famous within our community. Her courage and fortitude are an example for anyone who knows about the rigors of her life in recent years. Many who know her haven't known about her illness, which she seemed to wear so lightly. I ask that we remember Liza tonight, a really, truly beloved member of the Somerville community, and that we keep her husband, Ram, and their daughter, Marissa, and the whole family in our thoughts."
Counselor Strezzo.
I wish to take a moment for the father of Kaylee Calietano, who is our Somerville Public Schools Director of Equity and Excellence. Her father, Dr. William Harrison Smithy Smith, passed over the past couple months. He was a veteran, a tireless educator, an entrepreneur, and social change-maker. He built a tradition, Race Amity, to cure society ills. He was a, he had left a magnificent legacy, but the obituary that came out, according to his daughter, barely scratches the surface of his spirit. And when you read all of that he did in the short span of time he was here, you really catch that. He is the recipient of many awards, including the Black Filmmakers Hall of Fame Outstanding Documentary Award for The Invisible Soldiers: Unheard Voices, which aired nationally on PBS, the National Education Association Award for Outstanding Program for Television, the NAACP Chairman's Award for Service Through Media, and the Afra-SAG Diversity in Production Award. He's also the co-author of Race Amity, America's Other Tradition Primer. And his driving passion was the concept of race amity, the principle of oneness, of humankind underlying that concept, and the applicability of those principles to cure so much of that which can divide and hamper us. So I'd like to keep him in our prayers and his family in our prayers.
Thank you. Any other moments of silence?
I have, and just a quick moment of silence for Yaron Lashinsky and Cyril Milgram. That is all.
Thank you. Will everyone in the chamber who is able to please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. You may be seated. Colleagues, we have a number of items we're taking out of order this evening. We, of course, will start with our citations and our grants location. Then we'll move to item 712, which is a proclamation. We'll take 401 and 402 up together. We have some guest speakers there for those two items. We'll also take up 1001 next, which we have a speaker for, and then 801, which is a presentation by Director Raish, which we're all looking forward to this evening. So with that, Madam Clerk, let's read the next item, please.
Item 1.3 is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 24, 2025.
Seeing no opposition, that is approved. Next item.
Item 1.4 is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of April 16, 2025.
Seeing no opposition, the minutes are approved. Next item.
Item 2.1 is a citation by Counselor Pineda Neufeld commending Tom Lamar for six years of service as chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Do we have Madam Mayor here? I will read the citation while we find our mayor to speak on this item. Our citation, our first citation this evening, "Be it hereby known to all that the Somerville City Council and the mayor offer their sincerest commendations to Tom Lamar for six years of excellent service as the chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Tom has advanced the city's goals of improving safety for all road users, encouraging residents, workers, and visitors to travel by bike, and helping to build a culture of safe streets activism in the community. The council and mayor look forward to Tom's continued work as a member of the committee offered this 22nd day of May, 2025." And we have Madam Mayor here to speak on the citation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm really pleased to introduce this citation and thank Tom Lamar for his excellent services as chair of the Somerville Bicycle Advisory Committee. In Somerville especially, we are very lucky that we benefit from the time and energy of so many volunteers in our community. Some of them serve as officials on our city boards, commissions, and committee. This brings a certain level of formality and accountability to someone's advocacy and volunteerism. But when you serve as a committee officer or chair, there's another level of time and commitment, visibility, and pressure. Tom Lamar is a Ward One resident. He served on the Somerville Bicycle Advisory Committee since 2015, happy 10 years. He was elected chair in 2019. As chair, he followed the footsteps of incredible advocates like Ken Carlson, Alex Epstein, Brian Postaway, and Alan Moore. So now I'm going to brag about you, okay? So during his tenure, he helped push the Somerville's transportation policy forward for several important ways, in several important ways. He became Somerville's leading voice on state agency projects, challenging our partners at Mast dot to meet our community's demand and redesign state roads like Mystic Ave, McGrath Highway, and Elway Brook Parkway. He also helped build support among our elected officials to grow our in-house staff teams in several departments that work on safe streets issues, not just mobility and engineering, but also parking and DPW. He led the charge to launch Somerville's first-ever citywide bicycle network plan and to have it formally endorsed by the City Council. And he supported a major committee recruitment process that has increased the number and diversity of residents serving on the bike committee. Tom will continue to serve as a member of the committee, and I'm grateful that our newer members will continue to benefit from his skill and wisdom. So please, join me in thanking Tom.
I am honestly flattered, and thank you for your support and the support that I know everybody has for making biking and all modes of transportation safe. If I may all very briefly say three things I'm proud of during my time. First, as Mayor Ballantyne mentioned, I am tremendously proud of our work for the Bike Network Plan and the Safe Streets Ordinance and the tremendous amount of community input that went into that. It's not quite perfect, you know, I always have some detail to suggest further, but quite honestly, it is, in my opinion, the best in the country. Take that, Cambridge. Second, I wanted to reflect on the changing role of different advocacy groups. When I started, it was basically just the bike committee. There was no pedestrian and transit advisory committee. Mobility was honestly fairly short-staffed, so all too often, the city would come to us and say like, "Oh, this isn't quite related. Here's a new crosswalk we're putting in. Do you have any thoughts on that?" And we didn't have quite enough detail to add, and frankly, they might not have been able to follow through as much as we'd liked, if we had. During my time, we've seen the rise of groups like Pedestrian Transit Advisory Committee, Summer Alliance for Safe Streets, Summer Bike Safety, and others, and I very much, I've done my best to listen to them and very much appreciate that we've been transparent and all work together towards a better, safer, less car-aligned city. Finally, one time during my six years as chair, I managed to end a meeting on time.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I just want to thank Tom for his time and efforts in the community. As far as advocates go, activists go, you know, I, Tom is sort of the strong silent type. I mean, he's certainly not afraid to get loud when he needs to, but definitely has a style that is, it certainly, you have a very gracious style about you in the way that you advocate for things, and I think definitely comes with that sort of catch more flies with honey approach, and so thank you for your strong advocacy in the community. Appreciate it.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. Hey, Tom, what's up? I have the current pleasure of serving as the council representative on the Somerville Bicycle Advisory Committee, and I just want to say, and I've had that pleasure for a few years now, during my tenure there, you've just done an excellent job, I think, of building collaboration through, from that committee to the pedestrian transit advisory committee, the, working with grassroots groups like SAS, and really managing what is a very well-informed and thoughtful and sometimes ferocious group of folks who really, really care about the safety of our streets and, in some cases, bring a lot of expertise to that work, and rightfully so, expect a lot from what we are trying to build for not only current residents but future generations in the city. And I think you've really found a way to manage to channel that energy in a productive and instructive way, and to do so in a way that creates an environment where people feel that they can speak, that they can engage, that they can debate without ever losing a sense of community at the same time. And I think that is really incredibly difficult for anyone who's tried to get even, let's say, five people in a room and make them all, you know, work on the same project, particularly when safety is involved. And so I'm just really impressed by your work. I'm glad you're staying on. I wouldn't, I'd have to ask the council president to remove me from the committee if you left, but please just continue to do all the incredible work that you're doing in the community, and hopefully with a little more rest now that you're not going to have to do as much scheduling. Thanks.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. I want to associate myself with everything that was just said, and so far. I think I served for one year on the bike committee as the counselor, and I was so unnecessary. I mean, it was like, this committee, if you wanted to kind of, if you were teaching someone what effective advocacy looks like, you would point to the bike committee. The way that they are able to bridge kind of the inside conversation with really technical conversations with city staff, and then with kind of just people walking around on the street, biking around on the street. street, biking around on the street, is just completely masterful. They, you probably understand like the engineering process better than any elected official in Somerville. I think it's so admirable and it's been so effective. Thank you so much for your leadership and glad you're staying on.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I wasn't going to say anything that I was inspired after what Counselor Ian Kempin mentioned there. The importance of people who understand the processes and how to, how things work, how that, you know, how the sausage gets made cannot be understated, and it's, you know, as Counselor Ian Kempin mentioned, and I just want to underscore this, it makes your committee such an effective one because you know, basically, you know how to work the levers. And I think it's just really impressive, so thank you.
Counselor Mbah.
President, I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm inspired by Counselor Jakes. I just want to say thank you for your service to the community. Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else not going to say anything? Congratulations, Tom. Thanks for being here.
Thank you all.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item 2.2 is a citation by Counselor Pineda Newfeld commending the Kiwanis Club on the auspicious occasion of its 100th anniversary of support to the community.
So they're not with us this evening because of the weather, so we're going to lay this on the table and take it up at our next meeting. Next item.
Item 3.1 is a grant of location from Eversource to install approximately 38 feet of conduit in Corinthian Road from utility pole 261 over 2 to an approximate point of pickup at 1006 Broadway.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
I have Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy.
Hi, good evening. How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. We'd like to install 38 feet of conduit in Corinthian Road to provide electrical service to 10 Corinthian Road. It will be a new development in four buildings.
I know it well. It's my ward, Jackie. Madam Clerk, anyone else here to speak on the item? Okay. I now declare this public hearing closed. Any counselors who wish to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing no opposition, this item's approved. Next item.
Item 3.2 is a grant of location from Eversource to install approximately 54 feet of conduit in Albion Street from utility pole 3 over 22 to an approximate point of pickup at 156 Albion Street.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak? Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy, Eversource, would like to install 54 feet of conduit on Albion Street to provide electric service to 156 Albion Street.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? No more hands. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Any comments from counselors? Seeing no opposition, this item's approved. Next item.
Item 3.3 is a grant of location from Eversource to install approximately 67 feet of conduit in Stickney Ave from utility pole 322 over 2 to an approximate point of pickup at 15 Stickney Avenue.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item? Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy, Eversource, would like to install 67 feet of conduit in Stickney Avenue, and this is to provide electric service to 15 Stickney Avenue.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Any counselors who wish to speak? Seeing no opposition, this item's approved. Next item.
Item 3.4 is a grant of location from Eversource to install approximately 80 feet of conduit in Glenwood Road from manhole 7417 to an approximate point of pickup at 72 Glenwood Road.
I now declare this public hearing open. Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy, Eversource, would like to install 80 feet of conduit in 72 Glenwood Road. The customer's going underground from overhead.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, the public hearings closed. Any counselors who wish to speak? Seeing no opposition, the item's approved. Next item.
Item 3.5 is a grant of location from Eversource to install approximately 160 feet of conduit in Broadway from manhole 1922 to an approximate point of pickup at 356 Broadway.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item? Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy, Eversource, would like to install 160 feet of conduit in Broadway. The reason for this is we're upgrading the service at 356 Broadway.
Is there anyone else here to speak on the item? Any hands? Okay, declare the public hearing closed. Any counselors who wish to speak on the item? Seeing no opposition, this item's approved. Next item.
Thank you.
Item 3.6 is a grant of location from First Light Fiber to install approximately 168 feet of conduit in Interbelt Road and one new manhole to a point of pickup at 30 Interbelt Road.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? If you're online and wish to speak on this item, will you please raise your hand? Bill Conway.
Yes, good evening. Bill Conway, representing First Light Fiber, just looking to install approximately 168 feet of conduit and one new manhole to provide service to 30 Interbelt Road.
Anyone else here to speak on the item? Any hands? Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Any counselors who wish to speak? Seeing no opposition, the item's approved.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
That is going to take us to the first item that we're taking out of order, which is item 7.12, a communication of the mayor proclaiming May, 2025, to be Jewish American Heritage Month.
Madam Clerk, will you read the proclamation out loud, please?
Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month was established in 2006, recognizing the more than 350-year history of Jewish contributions to the United States, and whereas during Jewish American Heritage Month, we celebrate the immeasurable impact of Jewish values, contributions, and culture on the U.S. and Somerville's character, and whereas Jewish American suffragists, activists, and leaders marched for civil rights, women's rights, voting rights, racial equality, and LGBTQ+ rights, and whereas Jewish Americans are an integral part of our Commonwealth and our city, making up an indispensable part of our city's workforce, business owners, teachers, policymakers, coaches, medical workers, and more, and whereas we must acknowledge the disturbing global rise in antisemitism, including here in Somerville, and that our nation has seen an increase in violence and dangerous rhetoric directed against the Jewish community, and whereas the city of Somerville stands against all forms of hate, including antisemitism, and is committed to standing with the Jewish American residents of Somerville and the Commonwealth, and now therefore be it known to all those present that the mayor of the city of Somerville respectfully proclaims May, 2025, as Jewish American Heritage Month, honors the contributions of Jewish Americans, and is committed to standing up with our Jewish residents to denounce all forms of antisemitism and hate.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm honored to join everyone here tonight to officially proclaim this May as Jewish American Heritage Month in Somerville. It is a true joy to celebrate the history, culture, and contributions of Jewish Americans, including so many who have shaped Somerville for the better. Our Jewish community members make contributions as civic leaders, educators, artists, good neighbors, small business owners, parents, students, vital voices in our community. We are stronger because of them. But we also know that recognition alone isn't enough. Antisemitism is rising across the country and right here in Massachusetts. Violence and hate speech are rising. Just yesterday, two staff members of the Israeli Embassy in Washington, D.C. were killed, and it deeply troubles me to say that Somerville has not been an exemption. I want to speak to a moment in particular. At a city council meeting in March, a protester brought a sign with a swastika into City Hall. We found it in graffiti as well. Staff quickly went into action in all cases, but removal is not enough. This deserves louder condemnation. Let me be clear, swastika is a symbol of hate. It represents trauma, genocide, and terror. It does not belong in this building. It does not belong in our schools. It does not belong in our community. There is no message that warrants its use. No message. It does not reflect who we are as a city. Last month, I also celebrated Arab American Heritage Month, another community that's facing increased hate and discrimination. I was proud to join a joyful event hosted by the Center of Arabic Culture and to stand against anti-Arab and anti-Muslim bigotry, too. And in June, we celebrate pride again. We'll mix joy and celebration with a constant need to stand against rising hate and violence towards the LGBTQ+ communities, too. America is better than this. Somerville is better than this. Our commitment is simple. When hate appears, we speak out, and we keep working to ensure that everyone in Somerville feels safe, respected, and supported. When hate shows up, I will strive to lead with our shared values at the center. So tonight, as we mark Jewish American Heritage Month, we stand with and for our Jewish community, as we do every day. The thread you weave into the fabric of our community strengthens us. It is with that thanks of your contribution, your ideas, your compassion, your leadership, that I am once again honored to proclaim this May as Jewish American Heritage Month in Somerville.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to sponsor Alicia Gecter also to speak on this.
Thank you. My name is Alicia. I live in Ward 3. I work full-time as a Jewish professional, and I'm really glad to be here tonight with my family and some of my friends, because usually we're in this space, standing up for what we value and believe in at rather contentious moments. And so tonight, we're here in celebration of our heritage and our joy and the things that the mayor alluded to that go well beyond those more difficult moments. At this very moment, actually, there are many Boston Jews and neighbors and allies that are gathered at a vigilant Brookline mourning the loss of the two young people that the mayor mentioned, Yaron Laschinsky and Sarah Lynn Milgram, who were killed last night as they were exiting a Jewish event that was taking place at the Capitol Jewish Museum in Washington, D.C. It's a site that my family and I have visited and enjoyed learning in about our heritage, some very playful parts of the exhibit that we have enjoyed being in. And we shared the story with our kids about what happened. We told them the news. And one of the pieces of the news is that as the suspect was being arrested, they shouted, "Free, free Palestine." The young couple who were killed were about to be engaged this weekend, and that loss of life is very painful. So yes, as a Jewish community in America, we are facing really terrible times that are full of loss, war, terrorism, and hate. And we do have a long history of persecution in the Jewish story and discrimination and resiliency and survival. And as American Jews and allies of American Jews, we all should be learning about those pieces of history and make sure that we are well-informed. And the Jewish story is also one of thriving, of creativity, of wisdom, of celebration. We recently had a friend visiting from Israel who works part-time at Somerville Hospital who asked us about our sign in front of our house. We used to have a sign that we stand with Israel, and it fell down during a storm, and we didn't put it up. We didn't put it back up. And he was asking us a little bit about why, and he said, wow, it must be hard for you to live in a city where you see and experience hate towards Jews. And my immediate response to him was, yes, there are moments that it is hard to live here, but I am so happy to live in Somerville. A, I have an incredibly supportive and diverse Jewish community that show up for each other, and B, I have a city council that I know that I can be in communication with, and we can be in dialogue together. And it felt good to be able to explain that and to know that we are both in a struggle and also incredibly proud to be where we are. I was raised in a family that taught Jewish joy. They really centered holiday celebrations, food, rituals, customs, liturgy, texts, education, and values, and really leaned into that joy. I'll share a very quick story. One of the Jewish values that we taught, was taught in my home, was about sedaka, a Hebrew word for charity. And as a little kid, you get to decorate your own sedaka box. It's like a little circular thing. Well, I guess it could be square, too, diversity. And there's a little slot for a coin at the top, and as a kid, you would take extra change that you would get, and you would put it in there, and you would choose where you could donate the money to. And I was given a dollar bill by a relative, and I thought, this would be a great thing to put in my sedaka box. But I really couldn't figure out, how did you get a big dollar bill and little coin slot? So as a, I was a little bit younger than my kids, I tore it into pieces that would fit into the slot, and I brought the sedaka box to my father, and I showed him this ingenious solution. And instead of getting upset with me for ruining a dollar, my dad just gave me a hug and acknowledged me for doing, like, doing the mitzvah, we would say, living out that value. And I really try and carry that into my family life and into my Jewish community life and into who I am as a leader. Last summer, our daughter became a bat mitzvah, where it's a rite of passage of really officially claiming your place as an adult in the Jewish community. And we had a very Somerville bat mitzvah, and we brought tons of family and friends to our city, which made us really proud, and it was really a beautiful weekend full of joy. And as a Jewish leader and a Jewish mother and a Jewish citizen of Somerville, I just want to lean into joy, especially as it helps balance the fear and the pain that many in my community are experiencing. And I'll end with the idea that Jewish creativity and contribution really flourish here in America, and I want to be able to walk the streets with pride about all those contributions and all those creativity. And I saw that pride on display on Monday night at Fenway Park. It was Jewish Heritage Night, and it was an incredible experience to be with 35,000 Jews and friends of Jews all celebrating our heritage. And that the fact that this is happening tonight, a little smaller scale here in City Hall, does bring me joy, and that is the piece that I really want to nurture, to be able to lift up joy, to be able to be there for each other in the harder moments, to work together for a more hopeful future. So thank you to the city council, to the mayor, for marking this month, for allowing Jews in Somerville to feel like they belong to a supportive community, to a city that sees them and works with and for them.
I want to share a few words as well. The proclamation, thank you, Madam Mayor, is really meaningful. And this moment is really hard, being here the night after a really tragic moment in D.C. Most of you know, I'm granddaughter of Holocaust survivors. I'm a mom raising a Jewish son in a city that I love. The mayor talked about the meeting a few months ago where a swastika was drawn on an Israeli flag here in City Hall. And I think about the city I'm raising my son in, and I think about how the most recognizable symbol of antisemitism was here in this building, was here in a building where democracy is supposed to live and thrive. And yet, we held the meeting. We moved on, passed some legislation. But for those of us who are Jewish, come from Jewish descent, who have Jewish family members, it wasn't a moment that just passed. It was a punch in the gut, and it was a moment that sits with me as I think about raising my son, who I named Isaac. Isaac means "he who laughs," and it's a proudly Jewish name. And when I announced the name to people in my community, I was asked, why would I be so bold? so bold as to name my son such an overtly Jewish name in today's world? I share this because we think that we walk the walk all the time on inclusion in this city. And I share this because this proclamation, these words, they matter. Words carry weight. So do the words that we say, that we share here in these chambers, the words we say that we share on social media, the words we say when we're walking around with a protest sign, signs and words like "globalize the Intifada by any means necessary," words that showed up in these chambers many times. We're here to celebrate and recognize Jewish American Heritage Month. We have to remember that we have to match our words to action, that when we think about inclusion, what does that mean to show up? What does that mean for each of us in positions of power to show up for our Jewish neighbors, for our Jewish community, to make sure that we're not just talking the talk with our words, which matter, but walking the walk as well? For each of us, for our families, for people like my son, who I hope to raise here, who I hope to raise in a community that really means what it says, that we're for inclusion for all of our neighbors. So thank you. I want to say thank you for those who came to hear this proclamation tonight. Your presence, your resilience is a gift, and you're not alone in feeling what you might be feeling today in this community and in the city. So let's continue to build a Somerville that doesn't just say everyone belongs, but really lives it. And with that, if there's nothing else, we can move on to the next item.
The next items being taken out of order are items 4.1 and 4.2. I'll read them both together. Item 4.1 is a resolution by Councilors Bass, Strezko, and Wilson that the administration create a senior liaison position in the mayor's office. Item 4.2 is a resolution by Councilors Bass, Strezko, and Wilson that the administration create a senior advisory group to advise on policies impacting seniors in the city.
Counselor Bass.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the thoughtful words that you offered prior to now. But this order is, came out of a meeting that we attended this week, Councilor Strezko and Councilor Wilson, you know, myself. We attended Mass Senior Action, and they are all here today, led by the Honorable President Valery, sitting behind the, the entire staff showed up. But I want to, before I actually, you know, say more, I want to simply say this is to enhance senior engagement and services. And I want to give a shout out to Councilor Strezko, who's really been a leader on senior issues in the city. Thank you. So this policy order came, you know, the main purpose is to address the needs of senior population in our city, and we proposed the creation of two complementary initiatives. So the first one is to serve as a centralized, accessible point of contact for seniors, ensuring streamlined communication, resource coordination, and program development tailored to their needs. And the second one regarding the advisory group is to provide direct input from senior residents on policies and initiatives, ensuring their lived experiences and perspective are reflected in city decision-making. So together, these efforts aim to strengthen the city's capacity to engage with and support its aging population, foster inclusivity, and ensure seniors are meaningfully represented in civic planning and service delivery. So at this point, I would like to sponsor one of our seniors, Greg Hill, who will be speaking on Zoom. And later, I will yield the floor to, you know, my co-sponsors, Councilor Strezko and Councilor Wilson, who will speak, and then sponsor other candidates and residents to speak. So I think Greg Hill is online.
Greg? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
As a Somerville senior, I feel that our voices have not been heard or recognized in the city. We are a most vulnerable population. I've been a proud member of the Cambridge-Somerville Chapter of Mass Senior Action Council for many years, which is a statewide organization led by Somerville seniors. There is a, within the city administration, there is a bicycle advisory committee, there is a youth advisory committee, but there is no senior advisory committee, which I find kind of ironic, not to take away from the good work that the mayor has done, but I feel that a senior advisory committee is best placed within the city council. Because the council on aging, to which we have been referred to many times, does not we, does not deal with policy issues that affect the livelihood of seniors in this city. And so I request that the order be resubmitted to have the city council have a senior advisory committee within its own equity committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bass.
Thank you, Madam President. I will now yield to our colleague, our large councilor, Strezko.
Counselor Shizzo.
Thank you. I do want to sponsor a speaker, but if I may speak on this, these agenda items, I want to commend my colleagues for the cosponsoring of this and for recognizing just the work. Thank you very much. And for anyone who may not know this, for 12 years, I cared for my grandmother. She lived with me, and I was her caregiver. It was incredibly hard, but I, and I loved those moments. And it was extremely hard to watch how the world truly doesn't see aging and respond to aging and plan for aging in any city. And the basic liberty to go to a restaurant you choose and being able to get to that restaurant, or de-icing the driveways or businesses before a snowstorm. I remember arguing with storefronts as to why they weren't salting their sidewalks in the winter and feeling so helpless and hopeless, knowing that the next day, when the weather freezes again, it was going to happen again, as if nothing ever happened. And we aren't planning for senior life and aging in place, although we claim this as an important issue in equity and diversity in our community, but we don't consider it. And totally to Mr. Hill's point, the fact that we have a, we have a bicycle advisory planning committee, we have all these different voices being forward, but why, after numerous years of me putting forward budget requests and finding, trying to find ways to bring seniors forward, that we're still having this conversation, our constituents, our seniors, have told us how valuable this is to them and how necessary, and it is necessary. They're telling us that this is important, that this is of value. So why are we still talking about it? So we have to find this plan to make it possible. I will be sponsoring a speaker tonight. And I want to also commend the hard work of Mass Senior Action, because this isn't the first time we're talking about this. This is years and years in the making. And I won't stop talking about it till it happens, and I know you won't either. And we're fine. Let's keep going. But hopefully, we can stop talking about it, because it just happens. So with that, I'd love to sponsor Mr. Frank, Fred Berman. I call you Fred, Frank Berman, Fred Berman. I very much know his name and respect him very much, to speak. Welcome, Fred. You thought you were tired. Never.
It's my pleasure to be back before the city council, this time wearing a different shirt, as a member of Mass Senior Action. And thank you to the co-sponsors of the legislation. My understanding of our intent proposing it was that the senior advisory committee be authorized as a subcommittee of the relevant city council committee, presumably the Equity, Gender, Seniors, Families, and Vulnerable Populations Committee, and chaired by a senior counselor, a city counselor. Under City Council Rule 25, it's entirely within the power of the city council to authorize such a subcommittee. And while I understand the rationale, while we understand the rationale for constituting such a committee as part of the administration, I believe that it would be simpler and less fraught to house it in the city council and respectfully hope that the order is revised accordingly. There are, of course, existing policies regarding snow removal, adherence to traffic laws, landlord and tenant law, parking, et cetera, that are codified in city ordinances, state laws, and regulations. And while the proposed committee may, in the course of conversations with seniors, identify needs for new policies, it is at least as likely that those conversations may point to a need for changes in how seniors are informed about existing policies and about where they can seek help with compliance or in addressing non-compliance with those policies. In the spirit of our discussions, I hope, I respectfully ask that the order's language about advising on policies impacting seniors in the city be broadened to state advising on the substance and implementation of policies impacting seniors in the city. And finally, I want to acknowledge the release tomorrow of a major needs assessment by the UMass Gerontology Center with the support of the Somerville Council on Aging. That report contains important findings, which I am sure the city will want to work hard to address. Our proposed senior advisory committee would be in no way redundant to that effort, but rather would provide ongoing sources of feedback about the progress in addressing the needs discussed in that report and about other needs and concerns that were beyond the study's scope. So I'm sure we look forward to working with the council and figuring out an appropriate resolution. And thank you for the time.
Thanks, Fred. Councilors Klingon and Davis and myself would like to sign on. Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I'm a big fan of hearing from folks themselves as opposed to speaking for people. So in that spirit, I'd like to sponsor Somerville resident Ann Kamara, who joins us remotely here via Zoom.
Great. Ann and Clark, Counsel Burnley would like to sign on as well. Ann, can you hear us? We don't see an Ann. Okay. Counselor Ewan Campbell would like to sign on. Counselor Said would like to, oh, the whole council would like to sign on to this item. Are you in?
Do you want to speak? Do you want to speak?
Counselor Wilson, sponsoring an additional speaker?
If Ann Kamara's not here with us on Zoom, I will sponsor. We have an update. Under a different name, perhaps?
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I don't want to take away Ann's chance to speak here. If we don't know what name she's under, it's going to be difficult to recognize her. In that case, you know, I am happy to sponsor a speaker from the public.
George, I believe. Come on up.
All right, thank you. Never done this before, so. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is George Teshu, and I live at 75 Myrtle Street in Somerville at Bryant Manor. And I just wanted to say that, well, we had a meeting about a week ago of Mass Senior Action Council, and several of the councilors here were good enough to come. And also Mayor Simmons of Cambridge was there, and she was talking about how valuable it is to her to have an advisory committee of seniors in Cambridge. And, you know, I think it would be wonderful if we could have the same thing here. And she was talking about that, you know, the greatest way to find out, you know, what the needs of seniors are is to hear from seniors themselves. And, you know, I think that would be wonderful if we could have that here.
Counselor Shizzo?
Okay. Madam President, we might just have, she might just have to submit a written testimony on it. But I do want to emphasize just how valuable and important bringing forward senior voices are and how we plan and consider the landscape around us. Say, for instance, you know how sometimes when you're walking and the sidewalk slopes right before the curbs slope down, like on a typical street? And they're sloped down a little bit? And there's a reason for that, because the company that constructed that was so that doors, the car doors would open, wouldn't scratch the bottom, I was told. But I've heard from numerous senior residents that seniors are afraid of tripping and falling as they climb up, climb up the curb, because it's not expected. So none of this conversation ever happened before that was ever planned, before we doled out thousands upon thousands upon thousands of municipal dollars to consider that. And when we talk about just how we navigate public meetings and consider, what I've heard from numerous of our older Americans, older Americans, older residents, who are also that, that we're not considering all the needs of how we sometimes have a public meeting or whatnot. We need to be bringing these voices forward. They're essential. And I'm happy to take this in committee. We will discuss the concept of where it goes from there, like if we need to write another order, but let's, let's move on this and bring it in committee and equity.
Okay. Counselor Bass.
Yes, Madam President. I just also wanted to acknowledge that it, if it goes to committee, we can always, you know, regenerate, you know, this resolution to a policy order, which, of course, we already know the intent. We don't have to authorize the council precedent to create a subcommittee under the equity, family, and vulnerable population. It's well understood. So once we have this in committee, we can have that conversation. If necessary, we will regenerate a policy order that will actually do the intent of that revision. Thank you.
So Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank everybody for bringing this forward. Of course, I'd love to sign on and just emphasize the point that was made earlier, that I think this is now the third year that we've made a request for this position. And one hopes, well, we'll see on May 29th. Thank you.
Is Ann on yet? She can submit other ways, yeah. So we'll send both of these orders to Equity Committee. Any other? Okay. We'll approve them with a copy to Equity. Yes. Next item.
The next item is going to be item 10.1, a communication by Counselor Klingon conveying the report and recommendations of the Pilot Advisory Task Force.
Very exciting. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you, colleagues. I'm happy to bring forward this item this evening, the recommendations of the Payment in Lua of Taxes, also known as Pilot Task Force, formed in accordance with the Somerville Pilot Ordinance, which was adopted by this council in 2021. The ordinance set forth the framework for a more transparent and equitable approach to how we engage with large tax-exempt property owners. to how we engage with large tax-exempt property owners across our city. Before I sponsor members of the group to speak, I just want to say, like, over the past 18 months, we've engaged in an inclusive process, holding regular meetings, analyzing best practices from other municipalities, and grounding our work in data and fairness. We recognize that tax-exempt institutions such as hospitals, universities, and religious organizations play vital roles in Somerville's civic and economic life, but at the same time, these institutions own a substantial amount of tax-exempt property, placing pressure on the city's tax base and public services. And just want to remind, thank Counselor McLaughlin for bringing this legislation forward in 2021 with the advocacy of community members, some of which who became members of the Pilot Task Force, who bring extensive knowledge of pilot agreements to the table, and that member is the current chair of that task force. And also, I am sponsoring her to speak this evening, Marion Wallace. Marion, if you want to come on up. And if all the members that are here from the task force could come up to the podium, just so we all can acknowledge your work. I think we have a few here.
Sorry, we lost my mic. So also with me is Ward 1 School Committee Emily Ackerman and Catherine McLean, who was resident Ward 7, who was the city council pick to sit on the Pilot Task Force. So I'm Marion Wallace.
Will you pull the mic down a little bit, Marion?
Sorry.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm Marion Wallace. I'm the chair of the Somerville Pilot Task Force. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you, thank you Counselor Klingon for sponsoring me, and want to thank the city council. Many of you have been part of this project many, many years ago, were very supportive about helping to host meetings, public hearings, all about why we needed to have a strong transparent system for payment in lieu of taxes. So, and ever so grateful to Senator Lydia Edwards, as Boston City Council actually wrote the ordinance that we are following, so I want to make sure to recognize her work in this. As Counselor Klingon said, we met for many months. We were very focused, proud of all the work that we did because we tried to make sure that we included every person within the city and thought of everything, and everybody brought ideas to the table coming from so many different backgrounds. Some of the key features are, we determined how the taxes would be assessed, that the taxes, if it was a dorm or a residence, it would be a residential tax. If it was a classroom or an office space, it would be business tax. And if it was a multi-use building, we would use residential tax. Some of the key pieces that we also wanted to highlight were that they had to benefit all residents of the city. In the past, some of the agreements didn't even benefit residents of the city at all, or they benefited private institutions within, more private institutions within the city. We also wanted to make sure, for people who are not aware, some of the faculty and students at Tufts, actually, their work was mandatory, but also it was counted as a contribution. So we wanted to make sure that none of the benefits would exploit workers of any kind. The other best part of this, which all of you have always been supportive of, it also would recommend that these institutions have PLAs, Project Labor Agreements, because that was actually written in partners, and so that is the only building that actually had a PLA at Assembly Square because it was written into their agreement. One of the other things we did was break down based on what you were. If you were an educational institution, we made sure that we kind of focused on what you could offer different residents, including our children in the city. Free bus passes, tutoring, support and training for our staff, our teachers and school staff, for medical facilities. We made sure that we included maybe some free medical care to our people that didn't have health insurance, maybe actually going to some of our senior buildings, or to help service our seniors that may struggle getting to appointments. And we also know a lot of services have been cut because of other budget constraints, so we wanted to make sure to include that. Catherine actually came up with a great one around, and Boston Medical Center has a solar panel system, and they give those energy credits to people in need to help pay their bills. So when we look at what the entire ask that we had, we were very specific, and I think we really tried to be mindful that it would actually include everybody. Another is the benefits of free use of facilities, and I know in the past it's been a huge issue that residents haven't been allowed to use their gyms. We used to have meeting space, but they stopped doing that. We really wanted to make sure it was inclusive for all residents. The other piece is, which has been the biggest piece, is making it very transparent and not back, what started this whole thing moving was the fact that it was just the mayor and whatever nonprofit that would sit and come up with an agreement. This makes sure that there is an actual negotiating committee that is part of it and actually has a say. I believe in 2021, 2019, there was a committee, but that committee had no say. They were more or less to sit there. This one would actually have a say. We also recommended that it would only be a five-year agreement. Partners had a 20-year agreement, and things change all the time, and the city should have the ability to change it more readily. And we also put a timeline at the back of the page around what the steps we see as how fast this could actually move for the residents' benefit, including a transparent website that says who pays, who doesn't pay, what we ask for. And it's more important now than ever when we talk about the limited school space that people have, the financial needs and that the city has, and the hardship residents are facing with the cuts in health insurance, food insecurity, housing. We had also asked that this actually be a separate fund that all this money goes to so that it could also access, help parents pay for childcare, rental assistance, and we put some small business assistance in there because we really want to see the partnership actually benefit the residents and the small business of our community and not just take from our community.
Madam President, thank you for that, Marion. Anyone have anything to add, Emily or Catherine? I mean, that was pretty thorough, and just as a reminder, I hate to be a wet blanket, but you know, these are all suggestions. We can't force anybody to enter into a pilot agreement, but next steps lie with the mayor's office in putting together that negotiating audit, but this is really exciting, and we have a path forward now, one that sort of outlines a fair and equitable agreement process. So hope that our, and we, like, it was extremely thoughtful. I mean, these folks put in a ton of thought as to, we're not trying to rake anybody over the coals, we're just trying to get Somerville's fair share as far as, you know, the resources that are used versus, you know, the return of which the city gets. So I'm really proud and impressed with all the work that was done on this, so if we can just give these folks a round of applause. I don't have anything else unless the council has any questions or anything, but.
I just wanted to say thank you. It's an issue that comes up a lot in my ward, in Ward 7. As my constituent knows, I get asked a lot of questions, what's going on with Pilot? Clearly, we, myself and Counselor Davis, share one of the larger nonprofits in the city, lots of questions and conversations about that pilot in particular, and was really excited to read these recommendations, just, I thought, incredibly thorough, some really creative ideas were in here, and I just really appreciate your hard work, so thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right. Big moment. Madam Clerk, next item.
The next item is Item 8.1, an officer's communication from the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management conveying progress on the Combined Sewer Overflow Long-Term Control Plan, Related Water and Sewer Capital Investments, and Stormwater Fee Strategies.
Madam Clerk, we have one more comment. Marion.
I'm sorry, but I just wanted to take note, Joyce Short, who is a resident of Ward 7, who put her heart and soul into Pilot, so I just want to make sure that we recognize that she actually was the one that wanted to start this project, and it's just unfortunate she couldn't be with us here tonight, but she very much is part of Pilot and all the work we did.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Counselor Klingon.
Brief recess.
Yes.
Before we start this presentation.
Good idea.
You're not going to put the pressure on me?
Director H, is that okay? All right, let's take a 10-minute recess. I'm going to get started. Come on back. All right. Madam Clerk, let's come back. Do we need to vote call? No. All right. Come on back. Director H.
Thank you.
All you.
Wonderful. For your record, Richard H., Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management. You are correct in looking at your agenda packet that there is 74 slides to get through. The idea is that this sets the framework for sort of a comprehensive understanding of everything that we need to know about CSOs and stormwater. I will not be going down into depth on any one of these slides tonight. There will be pause points. We can go back if there are questions tonight, or I am also very happy to meet with councilors individually if you have questions on this and want to take a deeper dive on any one of these topics. So this is more a framework and an overview, and we'll go through these very quickly. Kim and I need to have symbiosis on that. In general, there's sort of two major parts. One is about the Combined Sewer Overflow Long-Term Control Plan update, and then the other is a primer on stormwater billing, which we'll get into later next month when we talk about water and sewer rates. So first, what is a combined sewer overflow? In a normal system that was built in the mid-20th century and on, they have separated sewers, so stormwater is handled in a dedicated stormwater outpipe system that goes directly to rivers and streams, and all sanitary waste goes into dedicated sanitary that would make its way to a wastewater treatment plant. We have a combined sewer system, which means that all stormwater up until a certain point will make its way to Deer Island. That does have a lot of benefits because stormwater is kind of dirty, and so we send that dirty water to Deer Island for treatment. Unfortunately, on heavy rain days like today, that system gets overwhelmed, and both stormwater and sanitary makes its way into local rivers and streams, which is obviously very bad. So to understand the history of CSOs, we also have to understand our regional system. In the mid-19th century, Boston started constructing sewers that got taken over by the Metropolitan Sewage District near the turn of the century. That is what Somerville tied into. Believe it or not, all of that stuff just discharged to rivers in the harbor untreated until 1952, when the very first treatment plant was constructed. That did some good, not a ton of good, and by 1972, the Clean Water Act was passed by the Nixon administration of all administrations, and by the early 1980s, the Conservation Law Foundation had sued the Metropolitan District for polluting the harbor. That led to the creation of the MWRA, which assumed all of those metropolitan assets and put us on a track to start mitigating those CSO issues. 1995 is when Deer Island went online, and a number of projects followed to reduce CSOs. So when we talk about the Long-Term Control Plan, there are a couple of milestone dates that establish what needed to be done in the region, '92, '94, and '97, so we sometimes refer to those different milestone dates for different portions of the plan. But overall, on the next slide, the plan did reduce about 90% of total discharges, spent about $1 billion in 1990s dollars, and did an admirable job for cleaning up the Boston Harbor. This slide sort of illustrates how much of that combined sewer overflow was eliminated, and most of the combined sewer overflows that remain are treated. As a matter of fact, in the past hour, we've had two treated discharges of combined sewer overflow to the Mystic River, one above the Emilia Heart Dam, the other below it, depending on where the tide is. So I also realize that high tide just, or low tide just happened within the past hour. Fascinating stuff you can find when you sign up for notifications. Looking a little bit closer at home around Somerville, most of the work in Somerville was done in that early stages, the late 1980s and early 1990s. Six combined sewer overflows in Somerville closed, basically consolidated to the two that remain, one on the Alewife and one on the Mystic. Cambridge did a lot more work throughout the 90s and into the 2000s separating all of the Camp IV area, which took about 15 years of my personal career as an engineer working on the Camp IV separation. Now, that plan, from its outset in the 1990s, acknowledged that the work was going to be incomplete specifically for the Charles River and the Mystic River, which is inclusive of the Alewife Brook. And the acceptance of that plan and moving forward with that plan required that the cities of Cambridge and Somerville and the MWRA would have to revisit that plan. It specifically spelled out that that old plan had to conclude by December 2015, that the MWRA would then monitor water quality from the time period from 2015 to 2021, and by 2022, Cambridge, Somerville, and MWRA would have to start work on the updated plan. So this was always part of the overall plan. We're now in sort of the updateville. So what is the updated regional plan? So right now, Cambridge and Somerville, most of Somerville is combined. We have very few separated areas. Cambridge has some more separated area than we do, but they still have a preponderance of combined sewer. Boston does have combined sewer areas. They somehow managed to sidestep being a party to this, and MWRA is responsible for their outfalls. So that's what we're, our current plan. Thus far, we have updated the typical year. The typical year is what we use as the yardstick to measure effectiveness of a plan. We are the first in the nation to incorporate climate change into that regulatory framework. I'll say that again. We are the first in the nation to adopt climate change into how we look at these controls. We unified our hydraulic model, Cambridge, Somerville, MWRA, we all had separate hydraulic models. We integrated those, and we've started creating alternatives, basically conceptual designs, putting together sewer separation, green stormwater infrastructure, inflow infiltration reduction, storage and conveyance upgrades, to put together different concepts to reduce the CSOs. And as I say, we're using updated climate change projections to evaluate this, and not surprisingly, the, you know, what we've seen in terms of performance of the outfalls for the past five years has been reflecting the change in climate, and the climate change projections that we put into the model show the severity of the problem and how climate change exacerbates that. So if you compare it to the old typical year that the '97 plan was based on, basically the number of outfalls of discharges per year doubles, the volume almost quadruples, and then when you look at successfully bigger storms, like the blockbuster storms, those combined sewer overflow volumes that we need to handle double again and double again when you start looking at the larger storms. So I want to take a pause here to see if there are any questions on that sort of introduction information before we move on to the next section, which is looking at some of the alternatives that we've started to evaluate.
All good.
Wonderful. So next we'll take a look at some of the examples of alternatives. The first one that we needed to look at is full sewer separation, which is very difficult from an engineering standpoint. So looking at our area that contributes to the Mystic, you know, basically Winter Hill, Lower Broadway area, we would need to construct two separate new outfalls to the Mystic. Those pipes would have their own hydraulic limitations because we have to go over and under other existing infrastructure. There's only so much water that you can force through a pipe. So to get around those hydraulic restrictions, we would also have to build tanks, and we estimated what the size of those tanks were. So for example, we would need a 5.5 million gallon storage tank in the Gilman area to get around those hydraulic limitations. The idea here was just to understand from a conceptual level what we would have to build to achieve that sewer separation goal. From there, we can refine it, look at different options that do less sewer separation, more storage, and try to optimize the system to reach the same goals. So these are the sort of concept designs that Somerville works on by itself, works on in conjunction with MWRA and Cambridge. Flipping over to the Alewife, the same idea, what total sewer separation would look like. It would need a new stormwater outfall, which is connected here with a dashed line because it would have to go through Cambridge, and we have to negotiate with Cambridge what that looks like, and Cambridge has two CSO problems. It has combined sewer overflow and what they call the cycling safety ordinance, which means that if we touch a street, we have to build them a bike lane. So we're navigating our two CSO requirements in Cambridge to define what sewer separation in Somerville would be. Again, we would also have to have storage in those areas, in low-lying areas, so we show like the idea of storage or wetlands in Davis Square. Again, moving on to the next one, how we can optimize that with storage, and then finally, the alternative that's more in the MWRA area of influence are storage tunnels. Storage tunnels are a primary means by which many sewer districts handle CSOs, and these are deep storage tunnels that basically, instead of having the CSO discharged to the river, it goes down to a deep storage tunnel for temporary storage that gets pumped back into the system, and for us, it would go to Deer Island for treatment afterwards, and looking at different tunnel sizes to accommodate different storm sizes. So that's an overview of the sort of examples. There are, would be a lot of neighborhood impacts that we want to consider as we advance those concepts and evaluate them and score them and rank them and come up with a recommended plan. So again, I could pause here if there are any questions on that portion of the work.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, through you to the director. I love our neighbors in Cambridge. As you're negotiating, have you suggested that they pay for it because they got money?
Who pays for what is the next stage of our negotiation? Right now, we're trying to figure out what to build, and then we have to figure out who will be paying for each piece of it between Cambridge, Somerville, and MWRA.
Thank you. Through the chair, appreciate that answer. To my counterparts in Cambridge, hey, hey, let's be friends. Hey, pay for it. Thank you.
Great. So the next stages that we're in right now are developing the cost estimates for those alternatives. We're fairly well down along that, and we're starting to work through criteria to evaluate them so that we can weed out some of the alternatives and narrow it down to something that's a little bit more real and implementable. It makes sense to, you know, sort of take a pause and a sidestep into our overall capital investment plan and how this, how we integrate those priorities. As the council knows, over the past two administrations and with the support of the city council and several councilors emeritus and boards of aldermen's emeritus, we had, Somerville has been investing much more in its infrastructure in the past decade than in the previous century. We've been keeping track in engineering of how much production we have in terms of water mains and sewer lines that we replace. Every year, that production rate grows, and every year, the investment in our infrastructure has been growing, and we thank you for that support. And a lot of that has been in anticipation of this big requirement of us. It is, I've made no secret about the fact that I came onboard in the city, came from consulting because I knew this requirement was coming for Somerville and wanted to gear us up to positively react to this requirement rather than have it foisted upon us without very much say or analysis. So what have our guiding principles been for the CIP? Of course, fulfill regulatory requirements, mitigating CSOs among them, improving the level of service for our customers for water and sewer, mitigating flooding, and reducing risk, replacing pipes before they break, and increasing system operations. We've got two projects that we initiated design even in advance of having the plan in place, knowing that these were, would be projects that would fit right into that plan. The Morrison Ave project in, you know, sort of the Brown School neighborhood, and the Mystic River outfall near Foss Park. Both of those are things that would fit into the Long-Term Control Plan. We have completed preliminary designs of both of those. We have proposals to move forward to final design on that, giving the green light to final design on those two projects will be contingent upon what happens with the water and sewer rates this year. Speaking of water and sewer rates, the next thing that is worthwhile to look at is the financial capability assessment. So the federal guidelines for CSOs include financial capability analysis. What it does is it helps communities understand their ability to implement the CSO Long-Term Control Plan and developing the schedule for that plan, and it shows what the financial impacts of that are. It does not directly evaluate the affordability for individual customers. As we've had, you know, for the past several years with the council, acknowledgement that our current water and sewer rates have financial burdens on a certain number of our constituents. The EPA guidelines does not allow us to make an argument for a subset of The EPA guidelines does not allow us to make an argument for a subset of users. It looks at median values. Next slide. So there are different pieces of it. The most important is the residential indicator and financial capability indicators. There are also newer guidelines for lowest quintile poverty indicator and financial rate model that we can argue. It gets a little bit more difficult to do this with EPA because it is newer territory. But if we look at, you know, that sort of main one, the residential indicator, it is very simply the cost per household divided by the median household income. So on the next slide, you can see penciled out what that would look like for us. You know, we forecasted out to like 2030 when construction would be starting. Our revenue that we would need to generate at that point in time is about $50 million. And our total number of households is about 35,000, which gives us a cost per household of about $1,200. When you look at median household incomes for Somerville, we are well above federal averages and even above Massachusetts averages. So we've got fairly high median household income, which then when we do the calculation shows that we fall squarely in the low-impact zone according to the EPA regulations. So this is a way of saying that we won't have much of an argument to make on affordability to defer any of the requirements that come down the pike under this CSO program. If you also do the quick math in your head, it also implies that sewer bills can more than double before we can even start to make an argument about deferring or extending the schedule for compliance. The other ones being the financial capacity indicators that have to do with bond rating and net debt versus property value. I don't have the numbers to show you, but you know, the back of the envelope that we've already done, I don't think it's surprising. We've got a triple A bond rating and our property values are very high. So there's not going to be any relief there either. In terms of next steps, you know, we've been working on this for, since 2022. We have a deadline of December of this year, 2025, to submit the draft plan, which makes all of us working on this very nervous because there's still a lot of work to be done, a CSO ton of work to be done on this plan. So do expect us in the fall to be having neighborhood meetings about those sort of neighborhood-level impacts of what these concept designs mean so that we can inform that final plan. That plan then goes through a regulatory process, takes about a year, and then lands down to the final plan, which if EPA and DEP review on the timeline that they're supposed to would be December of 2026. No idea if there's going to be an EPA in December of 2026, so it may just fall to Massachusetts. So I'll pause there again to see if there's any questions on that portion before we move on to stormwater billing.
Counselor Ian Kevin.
Thank you, Madam President. I very much want to get to the next section, but I realized, I just wanted to ask a question about, you're going very fast. So sorry, this is about a previous. I think I saw on one of the slides, like the first alternative in the corner, it said $700 million, 40 years. You don't have to go to the slide necessarily. That's one project, basically, right? In addition to everything else the city has to do. My question is, say we were to be able to do that, would that fix the Alewife-Brook problems? Because in the picture, that doesn't. Can you, when we've talked about this, you've explained like more regional work that needs to get done. Can you walk me through that?
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent point. And, you know, I do have to articulate to, we have our friends from the Alewife-Brook here. A concern that I've been voicing all along, including to DEP and EPA and our partners at MWRA and Cambridge, is that this plan, or the plan for the plan that was set in the 1990s and we're now sort of follow-through on that, is constrained to looking at combined sewer overflows and what can be done about the combined sewer overflows. The problems for the Alewife, and in fact, also for the Charles, are more than just combined sewer overflows. You know, the CSOs don't cause the flooding. The flooding is caused by runoff in hydraulic capacity of the brook. The stormwater runoff that has contributed from the non-CSO communities contributes a lot to pollution and overall degradation. And there's, there's an acknowledgement that there is a broader regional solution that needs to be brought about in looking at controlling stormwater from the non-CSO communities and improving the waterways that are outside of the purview of Cambridge, Somerville, and MWRA to really reach a lot of the goals, both the Alewife, the Mystic, and the Charles. And unfortunately, we're just looking within this box of CSO right now. So to the extent that I'm able to use my position in Somerville, and I'm also the current chair of the MWRA advisory board, and I'm trying to get some consensus with the neighboring communities, that there needs to be a broader approach in parallel with this. Certainly, Somerville needs to do something about the CSOs and reduce that, and we need to update the system. That's non-negotiable. But we also need to be clear-eyed that there are other larger regional things that have to happen. And as this plan reaches its conclusion, I do want the, I want to have the conversation regionally about how we invest regional dollars. And are, is there lower-hanging fruit with stormwater in Belmont that can improve the Mystic more than investing in Cambridge and Somerville? I don't know if there is or isn't, but we need to open up that avenue of discussion.
Through you, Madam President, just to make sure that I understand, this problem is not entirely caused by the combined sewers in Somerville. It is also caused by just stormwater runoff from a lot of communities who are not covered by this dictated plan. And currently, there's no statewide plan to address that and to bring in these communities that have all these stormwater contributions. And maybe through our advocacy, we can push for there to be a new statewide plan. That's the vision. All right, well, this whole presentation makes me terrified, but I'm glad that you're on the case.
It's a great feeling word. Counselor Struzzo.
Thank you. Madam President, through you to our Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management. Going to counter slides 31 and going forward to bring forth the concept of more of a realistic view for, while we may, of the EPA standards of how a low-impact increase of bills will be, to quote a majority of Somerville residents, are enough for us to eat the costs. But for those who very much are just struggling to keep their heads above water, let's be real and not gaslight the actual impact that the, an increase of bills will, of costs will cause to Somerville residents, including longtime Somerville residents, including probably some of the residents that were here just a half an hour earlier, talking about wanting to stay in our city as Somerville seniors. So yes, sure, by EPA standards or there's no plan of blah, 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 how financially this may impact us, we can do better as a municipality and find solutions to that. And that's what we're going for. And all the counters that I've heard don't give me hope that this has been considered at a serious level and really encouraging that commitment we claim we have as a community that, of keeping everybody in our city and focusing on affordability. Because if we are pushing our community members out because of these death-by-paper-cuts increase of bills, we are pushing people out of our community and we are not abiding by the values we claim we stand by.
Counselor McLaughlin. And then Counselor Burnley.
Madam President, on that point, so we did commission a study to address the feasibility of reduced rates for low-income people, which bade mixed results, I guess. Through you to the director. Could you remind me what those results were and if the city's considering anything there?
Through the chair. That initiative that was being led by Director of Water and Sewer, Dimitri Vidalis, and a consultant, Ralph Tellis, essentially concluded that anything that they were looking at to provide a ratepayer assistance program would be illegal under Massachusetts state law. So they spent a good deal of time exploring things that they then discovered after the fact were in fact illegal in Massachusetts. They then sort of threw their hands up and came back to something that StanTech and I had been discussing three years prior, that we can at least make some adjustments for fairness in the distribution of billing by adjusting some of the parameters in how we bill, which is a step towards fairness and a step towards making things somewhat more affordable, particularly for families that live in two- and three-family buildings, but is not really a wholesale ratepayer assistance program.
Well, could we get the money back from that study and just hand it to your department, perhaps, since you had the answer?
Yeah.
I'll leave that alone. I do, I mean, I'm going to keep listening, but just to add to what Counselor Struzzo said, I understand the EPA is not concerned about the financial burden that this will have on residents. It concerns me, does not negate the fact that this is important work that needs to be done as well, so, but it is disappointing that, to hear that the study that we commissioned bade no fruit.
Bless you. Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, yeah, not to, how do I say this in an EPA-friendly way? Yeah, not to dogpile this, because I do want to just note, early in this conversation, you did point out that this is an assessment that is not looking at specifically the, I mean, pretty much the impact on residents beyond this narrow band. Of course, just want to acknowledge, we have many residents who are, might be described as asset-rich but cash-poor in this city. We have many residents, I mean, and also, this is a pet peeve of mine, one of the issues with the, looking at the median and the average is, we've also lost a lot of low-income residents already. Somerville is attracting more people who are, who work in certain industries such as the tech industry, biomedical industry, that have higher salaries in general. But we also have just lost many residents who cannot afford to live here anymore. And that is, I think, a significant aspect of how our average has risen so fast. And as someone who does not personally relate to that average in any way, and does not know many people who do, I think it's worth acknowledging. My question had to do a bit more with the design aspects. You had mentioned previously that we are obviously considering climate change as a factor in what we're building here. And I know the city has been taking steps to produce more green infrastructure throughout the city. Can you speak to if what your team is working on is connecting those pieces at all, how the green infrastructure will connect with the sewer overflow system?
Yeah. Through the chair. Green stormwater infrastructure is a part of all of our sewer-related projects. There are limitations to how much volume those units within the right-of-way can accommodate. So they don't have a very large impact on the CSO. But in areas where we do sewer separation, we also have to worry about all the other pollutants that are coming from runoff. So the green stormwater infrastructure has a larger role to play in improving water quality of those stormwater discharges for areas that we've separated sewers.
Thank you.
Counselor Cleand.
Madam President, I'll be brief. I just, I will pigpile a little bit. You know, it is hard to hear when we see the slide about, you know, how wealthy our residents are and how we, you know, we don't qualify for sympathy or whatever it was. When, that doesn't tell, the story is, is that, you know, we are trying to hang on desperately to being a diverse community, economically diverse, as well as, you know, racial and otherwise. And, you know, these rates that, you know, that are possibly coming down the pipeline to pay for this stuff are just making it harder and harder to hang on to the working class and the not-so-wealthy folks in the city. So it's just a hard pill to swallow to see that one. Yeah, sure, maybe by and large, you know, we've been gentrified to the point where quite a number of wealthy people, I think, you know, even as we build affordable housing and as we see even in our inclusionary units, the water bills being separately metered, I just think we continue to make it an unaffordable place. And it's unfortunate that, you know, we're carrying the load for Belmont and whatever other cities. I mean, we need a break here in Somerville, so.
Counselor Ba.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Director Ray. Again, we will need some time to actually go through this stuff, but like Counselor and you and Campen said, like you're, I mean, we're going a little fast. But I guess, one of the things I'm curious to know now is what are the current, current water and sewer rates, you know, impacting low-income households, renters, and seniors on fixed income? Like how, you know, what is the situation now so we can be able to project about, like once you come back, we can know, you know, what to, how to anticipate what the future will look like?
Through the chair. So it's something that the city needs to look at in terms of affordability and all the things that we need to complete for the water and sewer systems and for the CSO requirements. Unfortunately, there's, within the EPA framework, there's no room for that discussion. There's no room for the cost of living. You know, it's guidelines based on national standards, and so there's no sort of forgiveness for our high cost of living here. There's no real look at diversity of income, especially in a city like Somerville where incomes are bimodal. So we're in a difficult position to be negotiating with EPA on what these requirements are, but also trying to navigate the impacts to our ratepayers. I don't have a good answer for it. It's something that we have to continue to work on.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, Director.
What I do have a good answer for is how to bring a little bit more equity to this. And so that's why we come to part two, which is stormwater runoff. And really, Somerville has a twofold stormwater problem. One, and especially on days like today, is flooding. And flooding, as we know, has been the instigator for a lot of our infrastructure improvement programs over the past 10 years. This is what gets constituents charged up about wanting to do sewer improvements. The second are the combined sewer overflows, which have that regulatory driver. And certainly, the impacts aren't necessarily within Somerville, but are adjacent to Somerville. And I have to give photo credit to our front row here that illustrates the fact that when the Alewife overtops, it is also laced with sewage from Somerville and Cambridge, creating a terrible health impact for people that don't realize what they're running through. And of course, the bigger the storm, the bigger the problem. So we can sort of step through, you know, some of our modeling, the, the largest storm in a typical year has pockets of flooding. When we go to the next larger storm, there's more flooding. And the storm that's larger than that, even more. And those problems are caused by our system, our pipes, but they're also caused by the regional system, the MWRA pipes. Both of those things have limitations. And this sort of illustrates the magnitude of what we're talking about, right? So on, on an average day, a dry weather day, we discharge about 10 million gallons to the MWRA. the MWRA for treatment. If you look at the largest storm in the typical year, at that point, we're discharging 50 million gallons to Deer Island for treatment, and about another 30 million in CSO discharges, and we start to see those pockets of flooding. That was that first map where there was just some pockets of flooding. When you go to the next storm higher, we do push more water out, I'm sorry, we are equally constrained with what we can send to Deer Island. Essentially, we top out at that 50 million gallons per day, that's sort of MWRA's limit for what they can take. The addition becomes additional discharge of CSO and more flooding, and that gets larger with the, with the next storm. Now, our problem here is that, the way that we generate revenue, all of this infrastructure is paid for through the sewer enterprise. So, you know, think about the Poplar Street pump station. We're investing $120 million to build a 50-million-gallon-per-day pump station and a 4-million-gallon storage tank that is dry on dry days, and only minimally operates on rainy days like we've had up until about 6 o'clock today. It really only kicks in when we have those big storms. We're paying for it out of the sewer enterprise that is based on water use from dry days. But the magnitude of the problem, the magnitude of that infrastructure, is entirely dependent on the runoff. So there's a huge disconnect between where we have to spend the money and from where we're gathering that revenue. So, you know, the obvious example for this, if you look at Target's water use, because they're just a big-box store with a couple of employee bathrooms that sometimes the customers use, they use about the same amount of water as five two-family houses. But contrast that with the impervious area that Target has, it has about 20 times the impervious area of those five two-family homes. So there's a huge disconnect between properties that are causing the problem and who's paying for it. Of course, you know, I think everyone who understands the hydrologic cycle, the more impervious area you have, the more runoff you have, I will say, even pervious area creates runoff, so it's not, you know, entirely impervious area's fault, it's area, but, you know, clearly, there's no connection between water use. So the proposal then is to create a third enterprise in addition to the water and sewer enterprise, create a stormwater enterprise, and start billing, in addition to billing for water use for the sanitary, bill impervious area by parcel. Now, we wanted to make sure that we were doing this with science, because this is data Somerville, and we didn't want to just apply a flat rate, which a lot of stormwater utilities do. So we went to the level of having AI analyze aerial photography and determine the exact amount of impervious area per lot, put that in GIS, diced it up, and we understand what the impervious area is for all those different properties. And so by shifting, on the next slide, you can see, while residential properties make up 90% of the parcels, and therefore 90% of our bills, it accounts for 60% of the total impervious area. So by shifting this model, billing model, we will be shifting that burden from residential properties to the large commercial properties like Target's. We also wanted to make sure that this would be something that could be implemented by the water department in billing. We wanted to simplify this. So we took a breakdown, a statistical breakdown of how that is distributed, how the impervious area is distributed, and we found that most of the parcels fall within certain bands. So if you go to the next slide, what we did was have flat rates for each one of those bands. So if your parcel falls within a range of impervious area, you'll get charged at that band. It's only the larger parcels, almost all of which are commercial, that then actually get like a calculated on your exact amount. And you can see from this that the distribution within neighborhoods is not homogeneous. This isn't like, you know, East Somerville are going to get, you know, one sort of bill, and West Somerville's going to get another sort of bill. It really is parcel-to-parcel differences. So that fairness in billing is one of our goals, but the other goal, from a CSO management perspective, is that private property comprises 90% of the total area in Somerville and 70% of the impervious area. That divide is not terribly surprising when you consider that, you know, we own the roads, and the roads are like 100% impervious. But essentially, you know, outsides of our rights-of-way and outside of, you know, Central Hill campus, 70% of the impervious area in the city is outside of our control, is creating all this runoff, and is creating all this problem. So the idea is, what can we do to incentivize property owners to manage stormwater onsite? So the idea is that we would have credits. You get your bill for your impervious area, and if a property owner manages the stormwater onsite, they can get a credit and reduce that bill. Now, we already know, on the next slide, because Somerville has been requiring this of new developments for so long, we know that every property in Somerville can retain at least the first quarter inch of runoff. This has been our requirement for all building permits for the past about 10 years, and everyone has successfully made this. A lot of properties can do better than that. So it's not like we're setting this credit at an unattainable level. This is something that if a property manager or owner wants to do it, they will be able to get this credit, and we will be able to reduce the amount of water coming into our system that we have to solve with those very large infrastructure projects that are funded by the city. So, you know, will it solve all the problem? No, it won't, but we did run the model to try to understand what the benefits could be, and they're considerable. And again, these are attainable things for our property owners to do. Right now, looking at the Mystic, now, this is, this is total volume over that typical year. We discharge about 33 million gallons per year to the Mystic. If we capture, if we get 25% of our property owners to do that thing that we know that they can do, that gets reduced down to 20. If we get 100%, we reduce the problem down to 5 million gallons per year. I have no illusions that we're going to be able to get 100% buy-in on this, but it shows you just how important it is that we incentivize property owners to do these things, to reduce the burden of the infrastructure that we need to build. The benefits on the ill-wife are a little bit less, because it's really all the MWRA's fault over there. I didn't say that. So, you know, our next steps in implementation of this, we're currently finalizing the FY26 water, sewer, and stormwater rate proposal. We will need city council authorization, in addition to the water and sewer rates, to change the ordinance to allow us to bill for stormwater and have a stormwater enterprise. We'll have a public hearing on the rates, and of course, city council approval of the rates. So there'll be more to come on this, and we're working through a lot of those details right now. So, thank you so much. That's the pitch.
Amazing. Yes, lots of questions. We'll start with Councilor Wilson first.
Thanks, Madam President. Three to Director Raich. I understand the goal, right? If you could put that chart back up that shows the, it was a few slides ago that shows the, yeah, that one. The goal is to get people to do the onsite management, to basically, you know, reduce the impervious surfaces and store more of that stormwater. If we do influence that behavior and get them to do that, they will be getting credits, as we heard. That will mean less revenue for us to fund the work. How's that going to work? We're still going to have to go do this work, that'll mean less revenue to fund it. Are we able to, if we notice, you know, big reductions in the CSOs, that we're able to go in and change the plan then accordingly? I guess I'm just struggling to see, you know, if we get the behavior modification that we're looking for, how that doesn't come back and bite us in terms of paying for the work that we have to do.
Yeah, it's a good question, and I should sort of explain the philosophy on that. And, you know, I'm not that smart, I didn't come up with it all by myself. Washington DC has done this, and the reason you do it this way is that the infrastructure that we're talking about to solve that big problem isn't a linear scale, it's sort of a logarithmic in terms of the, how expensive it is to, so let's look at the, you know, at the Mystic one, right? To solve the 33-million-gallon problem versus solving a 20-million-gallon problem, it probably costs four times as much. So if we're able to get people to do it onsite, even though we'll be collecting less revenue, the things that we have to build with that revenue are a lot less expensive. So we're trying to move the knee of the curve.
Madam President, through you, follow-up question. Through you to Director Raich. Are we then banking on some level of this when we go about setting up our plan? I guess my question, are we nimble enough to modify a plan, you know, based on what the uptake is in terms of the onsite management? Or are we guessing what it's going to be and really hoping that we end up right around there?
It's a little bit of both, and this is what DC did with their rain barrel program. It is also frankly what Philadelphia did with their much-touted green stormwater infrastructure plan. So the idea is to advance this first, get the EPA to agree that this is the smarter way to go about it, and this is what happens first, and then there's a stage gate at which you measure the success of it, to see if you then have to upsize. And to be clear, both DC and Philadelphia have been working all along in parallel with gray infrastructure projects as well, but those gray infrastructure projects are prioritized and selected to be integrated with these. It would only need to be upsized if these things don't work.
Councilor Kling.
Okay, thank you. Three, Madam President. This, you know, this plan was first introduced at the Equity Meeting by the head of Water and Sewer at the time, and somebody else, I was with them, I was a consultant or what. And so just so I fully understand what's happening here, so the way it was described is that, right now, say somebody has their bill, say, this is 100% of their bill, automatically, like, we usually just charge 30, 30% of that is typically stormwater, like, we have like an automatic sort of like built-in way we come up with that figure. I was, what we were told was that, that 30% would be sort of off, not off the table, but it would be sort of taken out of that main figure, and then this new figure would be generated by the amount of impervious surface. Is that, is that correct? Is that?
It is, it is an oversimplification, unfortunately. So if you look citywide, the concept is that the stormwater and the sanitary will be revenue-neutral. So this year, for example, the sewer enterprise needs to generate $35 million, that's what we're projecting the sewer enterprise needs this year. Under the old way of doing, without the stormwater, all of that would be generated through the water use, and so everyone's water use would then go into the bills, and citywide, we generate 35 million. With this, we're going to split it about two-thirds, one-third to start, two-thirds sanitary, one-third sewer. So if you look citywide, the water use billing will generate 22 or 23 million, and the stormwater will make up that 12 million difference, citywide. But as I say, it's shifting the amount that the properties are paying. So the net result is, you know, your two, your single house, two, three families will be paying a lot less on their bill, and the Targets, and the St. Catherine's Churches, and the MBTA will be paying a lot more because they have all that impervious area. So it's not like magically everyone's bill is going to be split one-third, two-thirds. It's citywide will be one-third, two-thirds, but we'll see an effective reduction for residential users and an effective increase for commercial properties.
Madam President, just one more question through you, and they also said that they use satellite imagery to be able to tell who, you know, what types of surfaces are on the ground. Is that, like, is everybody going to have to go to water and sewer and like, present what they actually have, or how accurate is it going to be for us?
So it's a lot more accurate than satellite, as you might have heard on Reddit a couple months ago, because there are like planes flying around, which didn't wind up being ours. Somerville is part of a consortium with the City of Boston that does low-altitude flyovers, so we have access to very high-resolution flight photography. So that's what we used for this. It's NGIS, so there will also be, in addition to the credit program, there will also be an appeal program. If you think you're in the wrong tier, or you think you've got, being billed for the wrong amount of impervious area, there is also a mechanism by which a bill payer can come in and ask for an adjustment to that, and we've set up a system that engineering will review.
Thank you.
Suggesting Reddit is a credible source of information, Director Raich? Councilor Yu and Campen.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I have one very quick observation, and then just a clarifying question for myself. There's a picture that you use as an example of different properties in different colors. It has the growing center and Prospect Hill Park as over 5,000 square feet of impervious area, maybe. I'd be very surprised if that's accurate, so I hope this isn't like the final draft, or maybe I'm just wrong. My question, though, is, and I think you just explained this, and I just want to make sure I get it. So if someone's sitting at home and they're thinking, "You're putting on a third bill? We're already paying the water and sewer, and now there's going to be a third bill?" As you just explained it, no. The, a lot of people's bills are actually going to go down, is what we're expecting, right? This is, everyone is going to get a bill that includes water, sewer, and stormwater. For people who live in one, two, three-family houses, their bills likely could go down in this case, and the larger properties could go up, right? So I think a lot of people, they're going to see the announcement the city sent out that said 18% water increase, and they're going to hear, then there's a bunch of mumbo-jumbo. I just think it's really important that we emphasize right up front, like, this is not a new bill on top of it, we are shifting who's paying, and people should really take that seriously. I mean, we'll see the numbers when they're presented to us, we don't know until we see them, but that's extremely important, and it's also extremely, I think, complicated to explain to the public. So, you know, when this is presented to the public, I hope that it's really clear, this is what you would have paid last year, this is what we anticipate you will pay next year, and I hope that number is not 18% higher, right? That's the hope for all of us.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two questions. The first is, does the, does the technology exist, I guess it's sort of a two-part question, the first one. Does the technology exist, and if so, I'll relate it into the second part, which is, have we considered, can we consider, is there a way to, as we re-engineer streets, you mentioned all the publicly-owned space that is entirely impervious, can we make the streets impervious? Can we, so that's, that's the, does the technology exist, does, can we make the pavement impervious and also reasonably survive New England? I suspect that might be a factor, or not. You know, but in addition to that, like, can we engineer the streets with more, you know, pervious features, such that we're not putting everything into the stormwater? We're building in, you know, miles wells and whatever else. As we look over a, you know, decades-long process, I would think that, you know, if I'm putting a couple of rain barrels, and we're hoping everybody's going to do that, that might move the needle. I would think that we could probably move the needle pretty well over the course of 40 years with our public infrastructure as well. So that's question one through you, Madam President.
Yeah, through the President. The short answer is that there hasn't been success in- The short answer is that there hasn't been success in using permeable pavement in roadways in New England, partially because of the weather, the freeze thaw. Also, even in the, some have tried it in the parking lanes rather than the driving lanes, but the problem with the parking lanes is that the power steering, like, when you're sitting there and not moving and turn your wheels, it creates a torque on the pavement, which that type of permeable pavement doesn't withstand very well. So you wind up having a lot of ruts and dugout holes in the parking lanes. Where we do put it and have been successfully putting it are in the cycle lanes. So most of the cycle lanes that we construct do have permeable pavement. So that's generally where we're able to get it, in Massachusetts. In terms of the green stormwaters, I sort of mentioned to Counselor Burnley, that the volumes that we're able to get in our rights-of-way are generally small, and that's largely due to the fact that our, our streets are so space-challenged, as it is right now, between driving, parking, buses, bikes, pedestrians, trees, which, believe it or not, trees are hard to build green infrastructure around because of their roots. And all the underground utilities, including all the service connections, like, most houses will have an underground water, sewer, and gas connection. So when you look at that sort of matrix of above-ground uses and below-ground restrictions, we're not able to do green stormwater infrastructure in our right way, right-of-ways at scale. That really makes a huge impact, the way that we can on the private properties.
Okay, thank you for that. The second question through you, Madam President, is the, the sort of calculation based on the, on the square footage of impervious surface, and as I look at the map, for the most part, this was, you know, roofs, rooftops, right? I think, if I understand how you explain this, that that's sort of the end of the analysis, right? It's okay, there's an impervious surface, therefore, we, by the way, the calculation figures, we're assuming all that water is going into the system, and people are going to pay for it based on that. Is there any consideration or calculation or factoring in, you know, if that roof is flowing into a yard?
So through the Chair, that's exactly what we want to do. Unfortunately, if you walk around the city, the preponderance of the roof leaders that you see will have extensions that make their way to the sidewalk. It's nine out of 10, if not 19 out of 20, make their way to the sidewalk. So, so the assumption is that it's getting into our system. For the properties that are already splashing to an impervious area that has enough ground cover on it to know that it's actually going to retain, that's exactly the sort of thing that we want people to do. So if you already have it, you can apply for the credit, and you're already well on your way to getting the credit. And frankly, from a, from a cost perspective and from a practical perspective, managing the roof runoff is the easiest, cheapest way to get there, and that's what most people do. The driveways and the patios are a little bit more difficult, but the roof is the low-hanging fruit, which is why DC, Washington DC, really focused on the rain barrel program.
So just to follow up on that, Madam President, so, thank you, that makes sense. And so I guess that then I assume the idea will be, since we want to improve the situation if folks are coming for a credit, because, you know, they have a certain, what will, we could also encourage them to, to, here's some other things that you could do, to further, you know, to make that current situation more effective and/or, you know, catch the other side of the lot that's maybe going to the street or something. That'll create, you know, an opportunity for us to improve even those situations, is that...
And through the President, the Engineering Department has been gearing up to do that sort of constituent assistance. Thank you. We're trying to make a YouTube video, it's going to be awesome.
Counselor Klingon, is it on this point?
Yeah, sort of.
Oh, okay.
Through you, Madam President. It's just, it's really frustrating to keep hearing you reference the rain barrel program out of DC when, like, I've put in orders about rain barrel program here in Somerville, and nothing's come of it. And, you know, even if it was like just at a discounted rate for residents, that's something that I was hoping we could have gotten started two, you know, a couple of years ago. So it's just frustrating to hear that that's part of a successful stormwater runoff plan.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the Chair, thank you for your diplomatic, Director. Way of describing our streets as space-challenged, I'm going to use that next time I try to go on a roller coaster that's a little bit too fast. They measure me up. On the, on the point of impervious surfaces and pervious surfaces, particularly around parking lots, because there are pervious surfaces for parking lots themselves, I don't know how well they do in New England winters. Are we hoping that, going, using Target as an example, we can get space, a lot like Targets, as a pervious surface largely?
Through the Chair, yes. And also the idea of, but a lot of parking lots in areas that have the requirements of them, or newly constructed, will have the cul-de-sac chambers, which are the same, you know, sort of things that we put under Lincoln Park, so that they have subsurface infiltration underneath the parking areas. Widely done, not terribly expensive, and is, would be hugely beneficial for us.
As a follow-up to that, because I was hoping that was your answer, because I would love to go, you know, one, have less parking lots, but two, where we do have them be more both environmentally friendly, and in some ways, I would argue aesthetically pleasing. My question, though, around that is, how, geez, there's a CSO, I hear it. Around the changes to a parking lot...
That one went to the Charles River.
Okay, great. How often are we expecting a company like Target or Home Depot there? We have a lot of pretty large, at different areas, pretty large parking lots in the city. How often are we expecting that those companies are actually looking to make structural changes there? Because it's great if we offer these credits, we also have a lot of, our zoning actually also incentivizes green roofs, I believe. But if Target's like, "Oh, we're not going to change that for 10 years," what is, what does that actually get us?
Through the Chair, I mean, it's, it's a behavior question that's sort of hard to predict. I think anecdotally, the Water and Sewer Department will tell you that, you know, if, if they have a sudden spike in their bills, it gets the attention of the accountants, and that might instigate some good behavior. We might be able to do some additional outreach as well, but it's, it does rely on external behavior change.
Counselor Wilson.
Thanks, Madam President. I'm hearing outreach, I'm hearing billing, I'm hearing appeals. When I hear that, I think demand on staff. Those of us who are in finance recall, a couple of months back, there was two, two new positions and a reclass, a promotion position in the Water and Sewer Department that were all billing positions. How are we going to, what's the, what's the impact here on the, on the general fund from a staffing perspective, specifically, I guess we'll say, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, to do all this? Is that, do we think that those two and a half, we'll call them positions that came before us, would those be sufficient to handle everything we're hearing about tonight? Or do we feel like additional positions are going to be required for that?
Through the Chair, it's a good question. From the billing mechanic standpoint, those positions are needed to implement this and other things that are desperately needed over there. So those positions are being put forward in the Water and Sewer budget. They will be funded by the Water and Sewer bills, so no general fund impact. We are also planning for support from the Engineering Department, and for a few different aspects of this, we've already, I mean, we are already the authors of all of this, we've been working on this. So the idea is that engineering support of this program will continue on as it has been. We do anticipate that it will increase, and we're, we're looking at our internal workload to brace ourselves for that. We don't anticipate needing more staff at this point. We think we can manage it with the existing staff levels and our mix of expertise.
Madam President, through you to Director Raj, then, so just to be clear, we would anticipate those two new positions where they, to appear in the FY '26 budget, and that promoted additional position within the billing, the billing group of Water and Sewer to be sufficient to handle all this additional work.
Through the Chair, that's the plan. And to be, you know, fully transparent, we do not anticipate being able to flip the switch and start billing for this on July 1. We're trying to lay out a plan that we can flip it mid-year, hopefully start billing on this basis by January 1. But we're, we understand that there's a lot of work to do to get there.
Counselor Said.
Through you, Madam President. Question, how will we incentivize landlords to do the water, stormwater management when they can just choose to shift their burden to renters? Thinking about, a lot of the renters in Somerville, they don't really have a say.
Through the Chair, that, for the larger residential lots that are managed by a company, there, there is the liability, as with anything, a tax increase, water and sewer rate increases, the way that these things are calculated, a shift onto there, that those could get passed on to the renters. There aren't that many residential properties that fall into the, the large-scale shift on this, but it is a difficulty.
Okay. I think there will be more questions on that once we get more information on this. But the other one is, just thinking about my ward, the areas that are already experiencing flooding. So these are already neighbors who are struggling to deal with, with all the water, like, day like today. I was actually meeting with neighbors just this morning about that. And, I mean, they can do all these things in their gardens, in their driveways, but we just know that those areas are experiencing flooding, and there will be more of it in the future. So how is this system going to work, this credit system? Because clearly, those will always be dealing with stormwater.
Yeah, through the Chair, and as we sort of alluded to before, for those properties, most of those solutions wind up being storage solutions. So rain barrels or other sorts of storage tanks that detain and release into the system more slowly. So it's about volume of storage and where that storage is. I agree with you, in particularly the Brown School neighborhood, that that neighborhood has a lot of, the glaciers were not kind to it. It left behind some really impervious soil, and we have a lot of perched water tables in that area. So infiltration is not really a strategy that would work well in that neighborhood. It's really all about the storage.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to toss out an idea in the hopes that someone else has already thought about this. But I think about, you know, the Union Square zoning that we passed, where basically, we ended up paying a lot for infrastructure there. At the time, I felt like US2, or, yeah, US2 at the time, should have been doing more to contribute to their own infrastructure improvements, because the bigger you build, the more infrastructure you need, especially water and sewer. And places like Cambridge that have a lot more money have actually required that developers contribute more to their infrastructure. And I'm also thinking about this proposed development in Davis Square, which is supposed to be a 20-something-story building, that as I understand it, couldn't get done without some serious infrastructure work. And then I think about Counselor Said's neighborhood, where they are talking about upzoning as well. All this is to say, if we're hopefully going to be increasing development, increasing density in areas, is there anything we can do to get developers to contribute to this, considering that they're, the thing that we'll always hear is, as a negative for development, is that it's going to be a burden on our infrastructure. So is there anything, any thought put into getting them to contribute as we move along?
Through the Chair, there's sort of two components to that. One, I get to control, the other I don't. We do have the infiltration inflow fee that we charge for any new development, that's based on the per gallon of new sanitary that they connect to. So engineering is the one that sets that fee. We honestly haven't reset that fee in a large number of years. We've finally gone through the calculation and will be increasing that fee. It's going to more than double, almost quadruple. So we will have developers paying something that is more in line with what our actual costs are for dealing with that volume. So that's something we're moving forward with. We do have to inform the council, so you will be seeing a memo either from myself or from Director Postlethwaite, likely next week or the week after, on that. So we're moving forward with that portion. The other larger portion has to do with the agreements with the developers, and I would agree with you that the Master Land Disposition Agreement with US2 was very much in US2's favor, and left some value on the table that was put on the city in terms of Union Square infrastructure. I think as Somerville has become increasingly attractive, on par with Cambridge and Seaport, my hope is that we will be in a better position to negotiate those moving forward. But that is something that's very much, while I am, contributes to that, it is a multi-departmental mayor-led initiative, so it's something that we collectively need to keep an eye on to make sure that we get a better deal next time.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll keep it brief. I think everyone knows what a Hawkeye have been on Water and Sewer rates, especially in the last few years, given the management of the department. I'm also proud that we've been discussing this stormwater impact fee for, I think, the entirety of my time in the City Council. Some of our earliest meetings were with the EPA discussing this concept. I have, there's a lot to like about this proposal, and I got to say, my concern was only raised when my colleague-at-large kind of surfaced the idea that this was going to be managed by the Water and Sewer Department. Do we have a Director of Water and Sewer right now, Director?
Through the Chair, we do not. We do have a commitment from both Director Bean and myself to have a lot of personal involvement in the direction of Water and Sewer at the moment. We are both committing our personal time and some of our staff time to assisting Water and Sewer, because it is a utility that cannot fail for us. And so we're prioritizing some of our time and efforts on keeping the ship afloat.
Well, that is a great answer, second only to, yes, I will do the job. So thank you, Director Raj.
I still have a school to build, my friend.
Yes, that's, I, I guess I am optimistic about this. I appreciate a lot of the intent behind it, and the devil, as always, is in the details. I'm, I remain concerned about the state of our Water and Sewer Department, regardless of two and a half positions created to handle this kind of complicated endeavor. I am one that I am sure will involve a great deal of constituent service impact as it rolls out. So I will hold the rest of my comment, I suppose, until we hear more details in the Water and Sewer Rate Hearing and Budget Presentation. Thank you.
Counselor Ian Kippen.
I respectfully move to place this item on file.
Before, can I ask a question, actually a follow-up to Counselor Scott, Director? We all got a memo from the mayor about a hiring freeze for the rest of the, rest of the calendar year. Does this timeline get impacted by not hiring a Water and Sewer Director until 2026?
Through the Chair, yeah, that announcement just came out last night. I'm positive... I'm positive there are some exceptions to that, Water and Sewer Director and those billing positions included, especially since they're not paid for by the general fund anyway, and cutting them is not going to help fill our deficit gap or fund the schools because it's a dedicated enterprise fund. I'm sort of speaking for myself on that. Director Singh might fire me at the end of the night, and then I can go have a cocktail.
Director Singh, do you want to speak to that at all? Because that was my second part of the question, Director Heschman. Thank you for proactively answering it. Do you know if the Water and Sewer Director position will not be frozen?
Through the, through the President, thank you for that question. I just wanted to confirm my understanding, I share the same understanding as Director Heschman. The positions that we are currently working on are the ones that are on the operating budget and not on the enterprise fund. We will be presenting, the mayor will be before this council next week, providing more details of the freeze and the exceptions that will be included in that.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. We will place this item on file. Thanks for being here. Madam President, should we start the meeting? Madam Clerk?
Indeed, Madam President. That is going to return us to the regular order of business, and Item 4.3, a communication by Counsel Mba, conveying a report of the Job Creation and Retention Trust Fund.
Counsel Mba.
Thank you, Madam President, for starting this meeting. So at the May 15 meeting of the Job Creation and Retention Trust, the board reviewed key updates on available funding, including a current linkage fee balance of approximately $2.2 million and an additional $900,000 in expected payments. Trustees discussed the findings of a recent partner survey revealing the significant impact of federal funding cuts on workforce development programs. Many partner organizations reported program pauses, staff reduction, and concerns about continued funding. In response, the board explored transitioning to a more flexible, open request for proposals process that still aligns with the trust founding purposes, but allows organizations to propose innovative and tailored solutions to current economic challenges. So the board also reviewed the status of two major RFPs currently in progress, childcare, career advancement, and good municipal jobs training, as well as approved a no-cost extension for Franklin Commons Tech through the end of 2026. Discussions included strategies to ensure timely and impactful use of funds, options for funds, investment, and steps to refine future grant-making processes. Trustees agreed to revisit the governing documents to inform this shift in approach and ensure alignment with the trustees' mission. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Questions? Okay, we'll place that on file. Next item.
Item 4.4 is a communication by Counsel Mba, conveying a report of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Counsel Mba.
Thank you again, Madam President. So the Affordable Housing Trust, they actually met, they've met twice, April 10 meeting, they had just two funding motions that were unanimously approved. One was they just start 24 Webster Avenue, and the trust approved $260,000 in non-CPA funds to support the development at 24 Webster Ave. The loan carries a 2% interest rate over 40 years with annual cash flow repayments. This approval is contingent on additional financing being secured. And then the second motion was Somerville Community Corporation, 31 to 33 Cross Street East. The trust approved a repayment structure allowing 100% of the development cash flow to first repay SCC-sponsored loan. Once that loan is fully repaid, 50% of the cash flow will then be directed towards repayment, repaying the trust loan. And they also met recently on May 8 meeting, the trust fund review and approved financial reports showing kind of like a strong availability, including approximately $7.5 million in non-CPA funds and $950,000 in CPA funds, allowing for new commitments. The trust received $5.8 million in linkage payment from recent development projects. Project updates included near completion and successful list of affordable renter units at 657 Somerville Avenue and 27 Everett Ave, both supported by prior trust funding. The trust also welcomed Bia Morera as the new Deputy Director of the Office of Housing Stability. The trust approved a key funding amendment to extend and expand Flex Renter Assistance Program administered by CAS and the Somerville Homeless Coalition. Trustees voted to extend the program expenditure deadline to June 30, 2026, and to increase each grant's award by $875,000, ensuring continued support for households at risk of homelessness. Trustees Breila Calderon announced her planned departure at the end of June, prompting the trust to begin recruitment for her replacement and reopen its search for a trustee with a banking or finance background. Thank you, Madam President.
Questions? Okay, we'll place that on file. Next item.
Item 4.5 is an order by Counsel Panada Newfeld, that the Commissioner of Public Works provide an update on preventative maintenance plans for all school buildings and progress on providing the public with tools to view preventative maintenance plans and actions.
Counsel Wilson and Klingon would like to sign on. We'll send that to school bill and Counsel Mba, and we'll send that to school buildings, facilities, and maintenance. Klingon, Wilson, and Mba. Mm-hmm. Next item.
Item 4.6 is a resolution by Counselors Panada Newfeld and Davis, that the administration update this council on the report and recommendations of the Davis Square Public Safety Working Group.
We'll also approve this and send it to Public Health and Public Safety, please. Next item.
Item 4.7 is an order by Counsel Klingon, that the Director of Mobility install stop signs on 10 Hills Road at Governor Winthrop Road, making the intersection a four-way stop.
Counsel Klingon.
Thank you. Just please send to traffic and parking.
Okay, well, sends to traffic and parking. Next item.
Item 4.8 is an order by Counselors Klingon and Wilson, that the Commissioner of Public Works appear before the Special Committee on School Building Facilities and Maintenance to discuss the recent break-in at the Winter Hill School Building and the measures being taken to secure the building.
Counselors Burnley, Said, and Mba would like to end. Shazza would like to sign on. And the whole council would like to sign on. All right. Counsel Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Yeah, so I've since gotten some information specifically about the Winter Hill. I won't go into all the details now, but just in terms of it being the perfect storm, where they do have motion sensors in the building, they, Verizon, it happened to go down the same, at the same evening that some vandals broke into the school. I'll leave it at that, but the reason why I, so even though I have some answers, I think that we all think, you know, I think it seems like we all signed on and believe that this should, there should be a public conversation. This was of much concern to the community as to how people were able to get into the building and light fires. So I'd like this to be sent to the buildings, school buildings, facility.
Okay, we'll approve the copy sent to school buildings, facilities, and maintenance. Next item.
Item 5.1 is a resolution by Counselor Burnley, in support of Head Start.
Counsel Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'll try to be brief, but I want to give this overview because I think it is really important. Head Start, as I'm sure my colleagues know, is a national program that serves almost 800,000 children throughout this country, providing nutritious meals, allowing for social, emotional learning at a very young age, for children from the ages of about two-and-a-half to five. And it serves almost 300 students, or children, future students in Somerville. The Trump administration has closed five offices, which account for about half of the, all the offices of Head Start in the last month, including the Boston Regional Office. As far as I know, we, our local program has not been impacted yet, but there is a lot of uncertainty about the future of funding there. And I think it's just really important that we stick up for these students who, or students, again, these children, who are, in some cases, literally like toddlers, babies, who need these resources and are, have far and few between enough resources to meet their needs. So I just ask that this be approved and that we send a message to our congressional delegation, which is in the order itself, that we really, really need this funding source to be stable moving forward.
Counsel Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I want to thank the good Counsel Elijah for bringing this forward, and I'd like to sign on. You know, my mom used to work for Head Start many years ago. I know the value of the program. It's a vital program for low-income folks who are in need of childcare. It's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a really important preschool program that helps with early learning and early childhood development. Where there is one, one of their classrooms or whatnot is in the Mystic Housing. It's been there for, I don't know, 40, 50 years, I'm not sure the exact number, but it was there when my mom worked for Head Start. So, you know, I really just hope that nothing happens, this program here in Somerville. We need programs like this to go untouched and allow them to help folks in need of childcare. So, thank you.
Counsel Mba would like to sign on. Counsel Mba.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you for bringing this forward. I really appreciate your leadership.
Counselors Ewan Kippen and Scott would like to sign on as well. Okay. And Counsel Wilson. Next item.
Item 6A is a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on May 20, 2025.
Counsel Wilson.
Madam President, it's late, so here's an abridged edition of my committee report. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, May 20, with all five members eventually present. We took up a 35-item agenda over the course of a two-hour and 14-minute meeting. We unanimously recommended that you approve tonight, here's the abridged part, seven grant acceptances, six prior invoice items, five transfer items, six appropriation items, including funds to replace the temporary boilers at the Brown School and DPW with in-building boilers, and the amending of the Street Tree Stabilization Fund to align with the tree preservation ordinance and a partridge in a pear tree. By a 3-0 vote, with Counsel Klingon recused, we recommended you approve the acceptance of Chapter 329 of the Special Acts of 1987. We heard from the Law Department, the city is required to accept the provision of this special act because it prevails over the relevant mass general law, and that acceptance requires both the city council and the mayor to do so, so there's no veto override allowed. The mayor has stated in a communication that she does not intend to sign this, but the committee members still felt it was important for the council to do our part of accepting the provision, hence the vote. We kept in committee two grant acceptance items for the Police Department's Special Response Team after hearing how the purchase of ball cameras was planned with these funds. This move was done in order to give time to look into whether a surveillance ordinance, the technology impact report, was required for these new cameras. The easement at 50 Tough Street was withdrawn by the administration with a replacement item, that's Item 10.11, on tonight's agenda, taking the place of that. So we'll get to that here shortly. We marked, as work completed, three items relating to the legality of an LGBTQ legal services stabilization fund, after hearing from the Law Department that this is something that could be done. Then we discharged, without recommendation, Counselors Panada Newfeld and Ewan Kippen's order about an update on CSOs, in order for Director Heschman to give that presentation to this body earlier tonight. And we marked, as work completed, three orders from Counsel Mba related to FY 26 departmental budgets. So with that, I ask that this committee report be accepted as submitted.
Counsel Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. I appreciate my colleague for gladly including me in the attendance of that, because I was there, but only for the last, for the adjournment vote, I was at my other job teaching, in this case, high school girls' self-defense. I did just want to highlight those three items related to identity document changes. We've had this conversation a bit in, before this council before, so I'll be very brief. But I'm incredibly grateful and glad that the Law Department, consistent with my understanding, believes that we can actually put forward this program that, and I think we should. I think it's really important for a lot of our residents to not have to pay hundreds of dollars to change documentation to align with their gender identity. I don't, I think it is morally wrong that we, I mean, in effect, that we, we're charging people for being who they are and for expressing and living as they are. And so I, I'm glad that these items are work complete, and I will just, once again, make a public call that we actually create this fund, which I think will be incredibly minuscule in terms of cost, and actually support our residents who are in the LGBT community at a time when they are facing, again, unprecedented attacks from the federal government. Thanks.
All right. The committee report's approved, which puts some roll calls in front of us.
Yes, Madam President, there are six items that that places before the council, all related to stabilization funds, and if the council is amenable, you can take them all up together.
Let's take them up together.
All right. So this is going to be on Item 25-0836, appropriating $45,000 from the Street Tree Stabilization Fund for ash tree treatments. Item 25-0857, appropriating $228,000 from the Medicinal Marijuana Stabilization Fund for three positions. Item 25-0874, appropriating $450,000 from the Facility Renovation Stabilization Fund for the Brown School boiler. Item 25-0875, appropriating $350,000 from the Facility Renovation Stabilization Fund for the DPW boiler. And Item 25-0892, amending the purpose of the Street Tree Stabilization Fund to align with the tree preservation ordinance. On those items, Counsel Mba.
Yes.
Counsel Wilson.
Yes.
Counsel Ewan Kippen.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Burnley.
Aye.
Counsel Said.
Yes.
Counsel Strezzo.
Yes.
Counsel Klingon.
Yes.
Counsel Davis.
Yes.
Counsel Panada Newfeld.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, those items are approved. And one further item is now before the council that was discharged without a recommendation, that's Item 25-0510, in order that the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management discuss with this council what strategies and resources are being utilized to bring Somerville's Tenerife Brook Combined Sewer Overflow into compliance with current and future long-term CSO control plans.
And we can mark that work complete. Madam Clerk, can we roll a call 25-0905 as well?
We can indeed. Item 29-0, 25-0905 is in order on the adoption of Chapter 329 of the Acts of 1987. And on that item, Counsel Mba.
Yes.
Counsel Wilson.
Yes.
Counsel Ewan Kippen.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Burnley.
Aye.
Counsel Said.
Yes.
Counsel Strezzo.
Yes.
Counsel Klingon. Apologies, we forgot to note that Counsel Klingon is recused.
He's recused.
Counsel Davis.
Yes.
Counsel Panada Newfeld.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one recused, that item is approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Said.
Madam President, I just have a question. You know, we just took a vote on this, but can, I feel the need to say some things about the school budget conversation. We have received so many emails, a lot of public comment from parents. We know these conversations are happening at the school committee level. But as a former educator on this council, I just, I know the hour is late, but I would like to make a statement about this. Can I do that? I know we just took a vote, but I didn't expect that we will just vote and not have a conversation. I know there's no conversation to be had because the mayor shared that she's not going to sign it, which is extremely disappointing. So if my colleagues can bear with me, I would like to say a few things.
Sure.
Okay. So as a former SPS educator, I am outraged that the mayor is proposing a level services budget that doesn't meet the needs of our most vulnerable students. We are in a budget crunch, but schools that serve hundreds of vulnerable students are not where we should be saving money. I would like to thank the parents and the educators for continuing to advocate for our students. It's the end of the school year. Educators have so much on their plates, and they're here showing up every week at every meeting, so thank you. Listening to the educators' public comment during the school committee meetings was heartbreaking. Many of the things they shared are things they have personally experienced, as in SCS. Many of the things they shared are things they have personally experienced as an SPS educator, untenable caseloads, having to constantly choose between offering one-on-one help to students with high needs, multilingual students, students with IEPs, or teaching the rest of the class. Many educators are burned out or dealing with mental health issues. In the last few years, know that there has been an unprecedented number of educators taking a sabbatical and requesting to use days from educators' tick bank. Right now, all those days are used up. So to the mayor who sits on the school committee, I ask that you spend some time in these educators' classrooms, so you can see for yourself what our educators are talking about. Despite all these challenges, we've heard from the public comment from educators, they're making sure their instruction includes differentiation, culturally responsive teaching, they're making sure it's based on social-emotional learning and project-based learning. Our educators, as we know, play so many roles depending on the day. They are social workers, counselors, some even play the role of parents, especially with students who live far away from their parents. Our educators continue to give and give and give. Right now, they're asking for a school budget increase that will fund basic things: co-teaching models, reduced class sizes, a living wage, 50K, starting at 50K, which I don't think is living wage, but that's another conversation, a true inclusion model that supports all students. We heard a lot about that in the public comments. Multilingual education staff, more manageable caseloads for special educators. These budgetary requests are being rejected, which is extremely infuriating. So to the mayor, I say, listen to the East Somerville School educator who works with students that are some of the highest-needs students in SPS, in the most highly populated classes, packed classes with students with IEPs and multilingual learners. Listen to the educator who shared that only a few of her students receive the reading services due to a lack of staff. Listen to the educators who have untenable caseloads. Listen to the educators who are feeling burned out. Listen to the educator who shared in her public comment, a very moving one with the full council, quote, "I'll be taking an extended leave of absence in the form of a career exploration year. I have reached the point where I can no longer ignore the mental and physical impacts of burnout. On my long-term health, I have experienced decision brain, cognitive overload, emotional absorption, mental overdrive, patience erosion, sleep deficit, energy suppression, constant interruptions, hyper-awareness, sensory overload, recovery deficit, social jet lag, the list goes on. My health is suffering. In the back of my mind is the idea that if my workload were to remain as is for any longer, we'll have no choice but to leave public education altogether." This is a constituent of mine and a former educator colleague. So, just reading that, just reminded me of all my years in teaching, because I felt a lot of these feelings, being the only French teacher at Somerville High School for years, and just being told that, just be grateful that your program still exists. Combining levels, yeah, deal with it. Having lots of students with IEPs, a lot of multilingual students in a class of 28, yeah, just deal with it. So I feel you, educators. So telling the educators to do more with less is insulting. Many have been doing more with less, that's why they are asking for a school budget increase that goes beyond the level services. Yeah, so to the mayor, I say, do not fail our most vulnerable students with a level services budget, and propose a budget that will meet our children and our educators' needs. That's my ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 6B is a report of the Committee on Land Use, meeting in joint session with the Planning Board on May 15, 2025.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. We were all in attendance that day. We took up a number of items. We had a discussion in a public hearing about revisions to height and width of our trees for the green calculator. This is zoning ordinance to revise definitions in the green score calculation for columnar trees. Someone else can pronounce that for me. No one testified on this item. It was left in committee, and we'll vote on it soon. Our Planning Board did not leave public testimony open, because there was no one there to testify, but we'll take that up at the next meeting. No public comments. We discussed the Summer Nova proposal again. This was our second full meeting discussing Summer Nova. We presented with visual representations of what the project will look like. We really discussed a lot, a traffic plan, or a lack thereof, and a lot of councils expressed the need to address this very important issue, one of the things that have just not been fully addressed yet. Counselor Ewan Kippen brought up the width of sidewalks and seeing if we can do more to increase the width of the sidewalks there. To give people an update, I will, I have two other land use meeting committees scheduled for June, and at the end of June, these items will expire, so hopefully we'll get to a place where people feel comfortable voting. If not, then we'll have to be looking at re-submission. And we also, I believe, we were waiting for a Community Benefits Agreement announcement, which came out recently, which looks very positive, and we'll hopefully be discussing that at the next meeting as well. Next meeting for that is June 5. Finally, we did actually vote on something. There was a project on Horace and Ward Street, moving the building from MR4 to MR6. There was a successful negotiation with the Neighborhood Council for a memorandum of understanding, which is separate from a Community Benefits Agreement, but the Neighborhood Council felt comfortable approving this, so we approved that unanimously. So that's the only item that we had, that we took a vote. I submit this committee report to be approved.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two addendums to that. There is going to be a public meeting hosted on the 28th, where the Union Square Neighborhood Council will be presenting the details of their current status of their CBA with Summer Nova, and answering questions from folks in the community, soliciting input, and then there will be a ratification vote coming up a week after that. I also just wanted to highlight some of the outstanding work that went into the Horace and Ward project. This is an agreement that has just stunning levels of benefits provided. Again, this is just something that comes straight from negotiating around development, coming from the neighbors and for the neighbors, as opposed to through city staff or people with more removed from the project. There are tenant relocation payments included in this agreement for everyone that will be displaced by the project. There is incredible amounts of money for nonprofits in the city, like Groundwork Somerville has a minimum of $30,000 coming their way as a result of this agreement. The Community Land Trust has $10,000 coming their way. There are affordability guarantees built in for the mandatory art space that will be created by the project. And perhaps biggest for the people who live nearby, but easiest to lose track of, there is an agreement in place that there will be guaranteed free parking for all residents in the neighborhood whenever there's a snow emergency, which if you've ever been down on the Horace and Ward area, you know what a big deal that is going to be. So I just think it's an incredible achievement. I think it's equally impressive that they were able to do that in the midst of their other CBA negotiations, and I second their wholehearted approval for moving forward with that zoning amendment. So, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. That committee report's approved. Madam Clerk.
And that puts one item before this council for enrollment and ordainment, and this is item 24-1584, the amendment to the zoning map to change 11 Horace Street, 5 to 7, 9, 13, and 15 Ward Street, and 15 and 21 South Street, from MR4 to MR6. On that, on enrollment, Counselor Ba.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kippen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Counselor Ba.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kippen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, that item is ordained.
Next item.
Next item is item 6C, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on May 13, 2025.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Seeing as I can't feel my toes, because it's so cold in here, it will be very, very brief. I'm not kidding. The committee did meet on that, at that date. All members are present. We had a relatively brief meeting, talked about a few items, accepted a Surveillance Technology Impact Report for shifting of some of the cameras to pole cameras, which is a previously disclosed use, and we appreciate the collaboration, as always, on our Surveillance Technology Impact Report, on our Surveillance Technology Ordinance to the administration and the Police Department for providing that updated impact report, which was a request of the committee at a previous meeting. We also placed on file the annual report, which was also a result of that collaboration. It was a revised version based on discussion we had at the first meeting, so again, express my gratitude for that. And we discussed the wage ordinance, wage theft ordinance. There were a number of votes taken to make slight amendments to that, based largely on proposals from our legislative and policy analyst, Mr. Salisbury. To the degree any of them were substantive, there was very minimal. For the most part, these were draft improvements. The report goes, you'll see the votes in detail, so if anyone wants to see exactly what we did, you can read those through, but I don't think we need to go through them. And then ultimately, the committee voted to recommend approval of the amended, the proposed amendment as amended. And so I will move to enroll and ordain after the report. So with that, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. Very grateful for the passage of this, or the recommendation of this ordinance, its amendments. I put forward this change as the representative on the Wage Theft Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to highlight the substantive changes. For those who were around, you'll remember that the Advisory Committee was previously consisted of named organizations that had been integral in the creation of this ordinance, the adoption of this ordinance, and were, with these changes, were moving away from specific organizations and moving toward categorizations of organizations, in this case, four representatives of unions, two members of, is it one or two, of local nonprofits, one member from a local business organization, as well as a designee from the mayor's office in the council. And these designees from these organizations will be approved by the council itself, which is also a change, and will, frankly, give us more power in determining who should be at the table here more regularly. I just can't overstate how important it is for the functioning of this body, these changes, because prior to this, as far as I'm aware, this committee has never produced a report, which it is required to do annually, and that's because it has not been able to meet quorum for years. So, and as we, as folks may remember, we had a serious issue of wage theft at Soundbites under the previous owner, which was adjudicated, and it really, really frustrated so many of the members of this committee not to be able to meet and talk and take up votes while there was a somewhat public example of wage theft happening in our own community, and many, many more that we know are happening but do not have the ability to really get into. Hopefully, this will be a market step forward and the ability for this committee to meet, to discuss, and to support the workers throughout the city in collaboration with our partners. So, with that, thank you.
All right. The committee report's approved. Madam Clerk.
And that puts one item before this council for enrollment and ordainment, and that is item 24-1754, amending sections 9-31 through 9-44 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Wage Theft. On enrollment, Counselor Ba.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kippen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Counselor Ba.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kippen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, that item is ordained.
Next item.
The next item is item 6D, a report of the Committee on Traffic and Parking, meeting on May 19, 2025.
Counselor Said.
Thank you, Madam President. The Traffic and Parking Committee met with all three members present. Items were marked as completed, then two were kept in committee. Regarding adding additional handicap parking spots on Washington Street by the Cobble Hill Senior Center, applications for new spots can be obtained from Director Reinfre. We kept in committee the item regarding updating the traffic signal equipment at the intersection of Rogers Ave and Boston Ave. Director of Engineering shared that the equipment at this intersection is outdated and not capable of managing the complex demands of current traffic, and Director Rosson encouraged the committee to consider the broader context and offer to research and provide more information on the status of the current signals. We kept in committee the item regarding installing rapid flashing beacon with push-button stop sign in front of the East Somerville Community School. Director Rosson noted that any installation would first require a detailed parking and engineering review to ensure it meets the criteria for this type of traffic control device. Lastly, we discussed the Safe Streets Ordinance, 2025 Annual Report. Counselor Burnley expressed appreciation for the transparency and ambition of the plan. He asked whether there are any uncertainties in the 2026 prioritization plan. Director Rosson acknowledged federal funding could be unpredictable, but the city has contingency plans in place in case grant funding changes. Counselor Wilson brought up the neighborways program and stressed the need for clear public communication awareness, particularly around cyclists riding against traffic on one-way streets. I asked whether quick-build installations would eventually be upgraded to permanent infrastructure. Director Rosson responded that while the ordinance does not require quick-build projects to be made permanent, the city's priority is to build out the full network first before revisiting areas for permanent upgrades. I requested that future public meetings start by highlighting key accomplishments and the overall vision to help frame the conversation and emphasize progress. I request that this report be accepted as submitted.
Committee report's accepted. Next item. Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, could I move to waive the readings of items 7-1 to 7-5 and ask those be sent to Finance?
You can. We'll send those to Finance. Counselor Ewan Kippen.
Give me one moment, apologies. We're gonna move for immediate approval of all these capim things, and I just wanted to make sure I got the numbers right.
We want to keep Counselor Davis's toes intact tonight.
I'll read item 7.6 into the record, a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Michael Sullivan to the position of firefighter.
I recommend approval of that, and I move to waive the readings of 7-7 to 7-11 and move for approval. And just note, the first name going to the Commission for Women is Irene DeSena, who many of you may remember is one of the first two employees of the City Council, who worked with us back when we first hired two staff. So, great to see that name on an agenda. I move for approval of all those.
Madam President, on item 7.7, I would like to lodge complaint through you to the good Counselor from Ward 3 for stealing my thunder.
Oh, no.
And my joy to see Irene DeSena's name back serving the city. She'll be great.
Great. Those items are approved.
Item 8.2 is an officer's communication from the city clerk conveying block party licenses issued.
Very exciting. Let's place on the file.
Item 9.1.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. I'd like to waive the readings of 9.1 through 9.9, as well as 10.14 and 10.15, and ask that those be approved, and we'll come back to my other one later.
Those items are approved. Madam Clerk, can we waive the readings of 9.10, 9.11, 9.14? Madam Clerk, can we waive the readings of 9-10, 9-11, 9-14, and place those on file, please? And then we'll waive the readings of 9-12, 9-13, place them on file, copy to land use.
That is going to bring us to item 10.2, an order by councillors McLaughlin and Klingon that the Director of Mobility update this council on recent changes to the #90 MBTA bus route and the reasons for those changes.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to use the word beloved inappropriately, but the 90 bus is beloved to me. Of all the bus lines in the city, I think it's the most interesting, especially for an East Summerville resident, because it really kind of weaves through the ward and goes up, down Highland Ave. If you live in East Summerville, if you don't live on Broadway or Washington Street, it's a little bit of a walk to get to a bus stop. So there was a recent announcement that they're gonna redirect the bus route so that it doesn't weave through East Summerville, and there's just a lot of finger pointing. The state put out a statement that basically put it on the city, and then the city didn't appreciate that and said that this is because of the state. This is all due to changes to Tough Street, which, by the way, is gonna be a great project for the community. The city tells me that they intended, that they made sure a bus can run down Tough Street even after construction, and the state says maybe that's not the case. Whatever it is, I'm not really here to point fingers or place blame. I just want to know why, and if there's a justified reason as to why, then I accept that reason. If it's a trade-off for community benefits, then I just want to hear that, but I really hate when like two government agencies are blaming each other, and then we all just throw our hands up and say what can be done. It's like if both sides are to blame, or either side won't take responsibility, then maybe there's a solution to the problem, because it seems like no one is 100% behind this idea. So I'd like this to go to traffic and parking, and I may or may not be able to attend the meeting, but I will send some questions, because, again, this isn't an inquisition, it's an inquiry. I just want to know what the logic was behind this, and if it were up to me, I wouldn't lose any bus lines, but if this has to happen, I'd like to know why. Thank you.
Councillors Wilson and Davis would like to send on. Councillor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to go on record and say that I love the 90 bus even more than Councillor McLaughlin, having lived in all parts of Summerville growing up. The 90 was like the, so when I lived on Garrison Ave in West Summerville, the 90 bus was our only way to the Assembly Square Mall back in the day, when they had McDonald's there and all those good things. But yeah, everything he's saying, you know, we just want some answers, so I'm looking forward to getting those.
Uh-oh. Councillor McLaughlin.
I object to that statement, because when I lived on Pearl Street, the 90 would come right by my house, and I'd take it down Highland Ave, and it would drop me off right by my mother's house. So no, the 90 is beloved to me and only me.
Okay. That item is approved, sent to traffic and parking. Next item.
Item 10.3 is an order by councillor McLaughlin that the Director of Mobility place a speed bump on Pinkney Street and consider the neighborway potential of this street.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Traffic and parking, please.
Approved, sent out to traffic and parking.
Item 10.4 is an order by councillor McLaughlin that the Commissioner of Public Works include East Broadway for city plantings and greenery.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Move to approve.
That item's approved. Next item.
Item 10.5 is an order by councillor McLaughlin that the Commissioner of Public Works address the leaning electric poles on Alston Street.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Move to approve.
That item is approved. Next item.
Item 10.6 is an order by councillors Burnley and Scott that the city solicitor provide an opinion on whether this council can restrict the use of autonomous driving testing within city limits, either through an outright ban or through requirement of a special permit.
Councillor Burnley, do you want to take any of these items together or one item?
Yes, can you take up the next two items? Can we read out the next two items as well?
Yes.
Item 10.7 is an order by councillors Burnley and Scott that the city solicitor provide an opinion on whether an individual within a vehicle or the autonomous vehicle company would be responsible if issued a citation during autonomous driving testing. Item 10.8 is a resolution by councillor Burnley that this council consider whether to ban or restrict autonomous vehicle testing locally if permitted by law.
Councillor Burnley.
One more, please.
Item 10.9.
Item 10.9 is a resolution by councillor Burnley that the mayor disclose to this council any communication with Waymo or its parent company Google regarding autonomous driving tests within city limits.
Councillor Burnley.
All right, thank you. I'll try to be brief. As my colleagues may know, there is currently autonomous vehicle testing happening in Boston by the company Waymo, and it is, if it's not already here yet, it is slated to be in Summerville as well. When this came across my radar, I will say it was from people who were quite concerned about the effectiveness of having non-humans driving down our very particular and unique roads with all of their spatial challenges, as the director put it. I would just love to see what legal avenues we have, what leverage we have in order to bring regulation around this, to be in conversation with these companies before they start to experiment on our roads and with our people. I was just told by Director Rosson that there has been, there was some communication between the city and Waymo. I'd love to get some more color on that, but that's for committee. But I'd like all of those to go to Legislative Matters, or, hmm, well, through the chair to the Chair of Legislative Matters, do you think that this would be more appropriate in traffic and parking or Legislative Matters?
Councillor Davis.
Madam President, I think there's a couple different issues addressed by the various items. I mean, I think there's various committees that they could go to. I'm happy to take them Legislative Matters. Because of budget, we have a very limited number of meetings left, so it might be a bit before they're taken up there, but I think that's probably true of the other committees as well, so I'd defer to the will of the president.
You know what? Since I'm no longer on Legislative Matters, how about we take it up in traffic and parking? Or, yeah.
Okay, all four? Okay, we'll approve those and send those to traffic and parking. Next item.
Item 10.10 is a resolution by councillor Burnley, recognizing May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Councillor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. I don't know, I mean, obviously, I'm not the person who decides what months or which months. I do find it strange that we have multiple months, the same months, but I do think it is really important to highlight Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, particularly in this moment, where so many community members are in fear of the federal government's attacks on our community. Just yesterday, a Boston resident of 45 years named Dong Nguyen was taken by ICE. This, he is a 64-year-old man who's been in our, in Boston for 45 years and has been a powerful activist and advocate on behalf of many issues, but primarily the Vietnamese community, and was doing, as far as I'm aware, doing everything mandated by him, on him, and it seems to be being punished for no reason. And this is just an example of so much of the fear and frustration coming from the Asian American community at this moment in response to so many of the violations and overreaches of the federal government. And as we recognize that a significant portion of our community is Asian, many of whom have family members or are themselves born in another country, I think it's important that we celebrate their contributions to our community and also rally around them in this time of so much uncertainty and fear. So thank you.
Item's approved. Next item.
Item 10.11 is a request of the mayor requesting approval of a lease agreement at 50 Tough Street.
Okay, we need a roll call on this item, Madam Clerk.
On this item, councillor Mbah.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson.
Yes.
Councillor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councillor Burnley.
Aye.
Councillor Said.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Klingon.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Panetta Newfeld.
Yes.
With nine councillors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, that item is approved.
Next item.
Item 10.12 is a communication of the mayor conveying a memorandum regarding item 25-0905.
Let's place that on file. Next item.
Item 10.13 is a new garage license for 599 Summerville Ventures at 599 Summerville Avenue.
We'll send those to licenses and permits.
Item 10.16 is a public communication from Darcy Hannah and Christopher Spicer Henkel, submitting comments regarding the school budget.
We'll place this on file. We'll waive the readings of 10-17 and 10-18 and place those on file as well, Madam Clerk.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda for the evening, Madam President.
Any late items?
There are no further items before this council.
Okay, I move to adjourn. Thank you.